Our meeting of the Shreveport City Council has now been called to order. We will have a invocation by Councilman James Flurry. And Councilwoman Loret Fuller will lead us with the prayer. Stand, please.
Let us pray. O gracious God, we come to you today seeking wisdom and knowledge. We pray, O God, that we do the city's business and make those decisions that will be prudent. We pray for the administration and all of the employees of the city. I pray, O God, for safety for them as they carry out their duties every day. Now bless this meeting and forgive us of our sins and help us, O Lord, this day. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator Clerk, would you call Rowley?
Councilman Redd.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Here.
Councilman Nicholson?
President.
Councilman Butcher?
Here.
Councilman Green?
Here.
Councilman Gordon?
Here.
I made a motion to approve the minutes of the conference on September 9th and the meeting on September 10th. It's been a motion by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. There's no discussion. Please vote. Motion carries for seven. Any council member have any awards or recognition at this time?
I have recognition. I'd like to recognize three individuals as here, Mr. Roy Carey and Mrs. Vera Malone and Mr. Billy Wayne. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, Ernie Roberson, the longtime registrar of voters for the parish of Caddo, was here with us today, and I have on the agenda a resolution thanking him for his 29 years of service in that position. Mr. Roberson, would you come forward, please, for us?
Councilman Nicholson?
Yes, sir.
If you would move to suspend the rules and take up 119, I would support that.
I will make that motion. Councilman Bradford, thank you.
I second the motion that we suspend the rules and take up 119.
Okay. Please vote. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Thompson, will you read the resolution, please, sir?
Motion carries for seven.
This is a resolution to thank Ernie Roberson for 29 years of service as a registrar of voters for Caddo Parish and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilman John Nicholson. Whereas Ernie Roberson, a lifelong resident of Shreveport and a graduate of Fair Park High School and Louisiana Tech University, served as registrar of voters for Caddo Parish from 1990 until his retirement on July the 15th, 2019. And whereas prior to becoming registrar, Mr. Roberson was district manager for the 1980 census in most of North Louisiana, a public school teacher in Caddo Parish, and he served on staff of both Congressman Buddy Romer and Congressman Jim McCrary. And whereas Mr. Roberson was Louisiana's first nationally certified registrar of voters, fewer than 1% of all election administrators in America have obtained national certification. And whereas Mr. Roberson was the only registrar of voters from the Deep South selected to serve on two national task forces on elections, one was in 2001 and the other in 2005, which were comprised wholly of election administrators from throughout the United States. And whereas Mr. Roberson served as speaker and panel member at the National Conference of State Legislators where he discussed the Help America Vote Act. And whereas Mr. Roberson chaired the registrars committee that recommended the new touchstone screens, voting screens, machines used in Louisiana during early voting. He served on numerous committees for the Registrar of Voters Association, including the committee that recommended to the legislature the most stringent standards for Louisiana registrars to become certified election administrators. And at the time of its adoption, it was the only such program in the country. Previously, Ernie chaired the committee that recommended continuing education for registrars and a professional standards committee for registrars. And whereas Caddo Parish is the only parish in Louisiana to utilize community group to aid the registrar's office to help voters locate their correct polling places via the Internet on election day. The Where Do I Vote program used for this purpose first started in Caddo Parish in 2006. And whereas in 2006, Mr. Roberson became the first Louisiana registrar ever invited to testify before the Election Assistance Commission in Washington, D.C., concerning the effect of community and apt... ...elections. And whereas Louisiana legislation adopted in 2007, which allowed voters who are 65 years old or older and voters who are handicapped to vote by mail, was recommended by Mr. Roberson and sponsored by then-Senator Lydia Jackson of Caddo Parish. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, that the Shreveport City Council thanks Ernie Roberson for 29 years of service as registrar of voters for Caddo Parish. His professionalism, knowledge, diligence, fairness, and hard work instilled in the citizens of Shreveport trust and confidence that the voting process is fair and accurate and the democratic process works in Caddo Parish. And his leadership on state and national committees improved the voting process for state and national elections and presented a positive image for Shreveport and Caddo Parish. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals, with one original presenting to Ernie Roberson and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the City of Shreveport. And this resolution has been signed by all the city council members.
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. There's no discussion. Please vote. And motion passes with seven.
Mr. Roberson, thank you so much for being here. Would love to hear any remarks you'd like to offer.
Well, I want to thank the council. It was very kind of you to recognize me, and I will tell you, I thoroughly enjoyed being the registrar for Caddo Parish. I always enjoyed working with your staff, Art Thompson in particular. Known Art a long time, a long time. And I really would say, I think that the 65 and above program that mails ballots to voters is an absolute gem of a program, and it's the highest turnout voting program that we actually have on the docket. The turnout for that in the 2016 presidential election was 83% return rate, a lot better than early voting sites, I'll be honest with you, but this is my view. And I think it's important to remember that the future of elections is technology, and we have to grasp it, hug it, and get ready for it, because that's where we're headed. And I've enjoyed working with y'all and working for you. God bless each one of you.
Thank you again. Before you leave, Ernie, before you leave, we want to make some commentary.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Roberson, thank you so much for your service. I mean, when you think of Caddo Parish and a true servant's heart and the years that you've been there, I don't think I can remember as an adult a time that you've not been the registrar of voters. So, thank you so much for your service, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the chairman should take a little progress.
Councilman James Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ernie, I'd like to say thank you for all of your service, and certainly, you know, we've gone through a lot of elections together, and you've always been there, and I just really appreciate you, and may God bless you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ernie, is that your son back there?
Yes.
That's my son.
You want him to come up?
He's my baby boy.
Come be in the picture. That's only for y'all. I shouldn't have to arrange anybody. Y'all squeeze in a little bit.
Okay.
And Councilman Bradford.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Robinson, now I want to express my appreciation as well. We go back to the early 90s, and you assisted in so many ways to help register voters in my community. But I want to especially thank you. In this era of voter fraud, voter confusion, voter irregularities, you have, under your leadership, the registrar of voters in Caddo Parish, and the Caddo Parish voter apparatus has maintained integrity and reflects who you are. We have never been caught up in any scandals that relates to inappropriate voting or voting machines not working, votes not getting counted. And I attribute it all to you, because you are a man of integrity and you have provided that same standard throughout the voter registration office. We're going to miss you. I appreciate you for all you've done. Good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
I thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Here's Ms. Scott, Mr. Jawan, and Ms. Scott, if you all would come up to the podium, please. For those of you who do not know, Jawan is, and I could let him introduce himself, but he's the guy who, we had the incident over at, I would say, in the Brookshires parking lot, where the young lady's purse got snatched, and Jawan is the guy who stopped the purse snatcher and ended up getting the young lady's purse back. So, we wanted to appreciate you and thank you for the outstanding job that you did. Okay?
And Clerk, if you would read this resolution, please.
This is a resolution to recognize Jawan Scott for his heroism and bravery in catching a purse snatcher and recovering the purse and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilmen Fuller, Nicholson, and Butcher. Whereas on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, Jawan Scott, an employee of Brookshires Online Avenue, was assisting a customer when he noticed an unusual event. And whereas Jawan said, "I was talking to a customer to make sure she feels okay, and I was praying for her. And after I was done praying with her, she was telling me how hard her day was. A few minutes later, there was a person snatching a purse right in front of me." And whereas Crystal Gray, the customer who had her purse snatched, said, "I was just, you know, right now," and he was right over there putting groceries in a car, and he didn't hesitate and took off. And whereas Jawan said, "I had to chase him down because I told myself, 'That doesn't feel right.'" And whereas Jawan chased the purse snatcher down and fought with him and recovered the customer's purse. And whereas Jawan's mother, Mrs. Scott, said, "At first, it was real scary, because the purse snatcher could have had a gun or knife, and Jawan was punched and kicked." Mrs. Scott took Jawan to the ER to make sure he was okay. She's proud of her son, and she's happy that he was there to help a customer. And whereas Jawan is a Special Olympics athlete, a runner and a weightlifter, and his skills contributed to the recovery of the purse on September 12th, 2019. And whereas Jawan said, "He will continue to look out for his customers inside and outside the store, because they treat him like family." And whereas because of heroism and bravery, Jawan Scott is now celebrated and hailed a hero in the city of Shreveport. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, that the Shreveport City Council recognizes Jawan Scott for his heroism and bravery for catching a purse snatcher and recovering a stolen purse. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals, with one original presenting to Jawan Scott, and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the City of Shreveport. And this resolution will be signed by all the members of the city council.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Please vote.
Picture term?
Yeah. Please.
Can I make some comments?
Please, yes, you take the picture.
Because I have something as well. Jawan, our council have already taken care of you with a proclamation, but I have a small token of my appreciation as well. When I heard the story about you, it blew me away. It takes a special kind of individual to see something wrong that happens and go towards it to try to fix it. So, proud of you, and I'm hoping that every citizen, you know, looks at you as an example. And I'm not even asking every one of them to chase anybody down, I'm just asking them to say something when they see something wrong. So, I greatly appreciate you, and the city of Shreveport appreciates you too.
And just before, no, Councilwoman Fuller is going to go down and the mayor will take a picture, but just before that happens, Detective Turpin from the robbery division asked that Jawan would not chase, you know, someone else down again like that manner. But at the end of the day, I don't think that that actual person snatcher knew that Jawan can bench press, is it 700, 750?
They put me on a 900 now.
900 pounds, so.
They put me on 900 pounds.
That's good. That's a good deal.
I don't have to tell you what I can bench press, do I, Jawan?
You mind if I pin the sign? All right. There we go. Appreciate you taking a picture.
All right, Jake, come on, please.
Take your time.
Excuse me.
I suppose so.
You're good, you're good.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford. Jawan, can you come back? Ms. Scott, can you come back up to the floor? I'm sorry. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I think Councilman Green was...
Okay, Councilman Green, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Jawan, certainly would like to just say congratulations, and on Thursday, if you come by the council office, I'll have a gift certificate for you from my favorite restaurant, and just God bless you, man.
Thank you.
I'm honored. Councilman Bradford.
Councilman Butcher. Go ahead.
There's two Bs up there, I can't see.
Now, listen, I admire you and your family for raising such a wonderful, courageous young man. When I saw the story, I was especially moved, because I think later that day, I saw on Facebook, and Facebook is amazing, and it's a good and a bad thing, but I saw on Facebook where in New York City, in a city in New York, there was a kid getting beat up, got beat to death, and all those around him did was film, video the incident. Your faith and courage that you demonstrated that day, instinctively, without fear of your own will-being, felt compelled to act. And that's what the mayor said, and that's why we applaud you today, because too many times, people who are in a position to make a difference, to act in behalf of somebody else, they turn the other way. And you demonstrated what compassion is about, what courage is about, and I want to thank you for coming down and being recognized today. And I want to thank your mother for accompanying you, because obviously, the values that she instilled in you is now coming into patrician, to where you have the love and compassion for people that you would risk your own self to help somebody else. Thank you, young man. Proud of you.
26.
26, okay. Nevertheless, great job, and give up the good work. Great things are going to happen in your life. Thank you.
Councilman Butcher.
Jawan, thank you so much. You have, on more than one occasion, carried groceries out. I didn't realize you were quite as strong as what, and I can load up a grocery basket. So, I really, but all seriousness, when I saw the report on Facebook and that it was you, I thought, well, I expect that from him. Every time I've ever come into the store and you've walked me out, you have been courteous, kind, caring. Some days are bad, and you may lighten up a day. So, I really appreciate it. I'm kind of like the police officer, though, I've got to be like a daddy a little bit. It is dangerous, and, you know, I'm so grateful that you didn't get hurt, but I'm also so grateful that you did it. So, I kind of have mixed emotions about it. So, just thank you so much, and I think that you are definitely a role model to many, many young men in the city now. So, thank you. I appreciate it. Ms. Scott, thank you so much for raising a good son.
I can, we had a conversation already, so I just want to say again, I appreciate you for raising him the way you did. So, thank you so much.
You want to say something? Good?
Okay. Very honored that you all have me around. It really means nice words coming from you all. It's my way of saying that it's always good to be a brave person, to stand what is right. A man stands for what is right. A woman stands for what is really right as well. Amen. Because no matter how many who gets in your way, you have to prove that you can handle it on your own, because it's always good to be brave to face something on your own. If not, how you know you'll handle it? Because I always give people the exact choice every day about saying, if God gives you a choice that he knows you can be given to, what will your answer be? Because it's always good to never say, it's always best to show it.
Yeah, that was true.
Mr. Taylor is here from the 2020 census and would like to share some things with us now.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I'm a preacher, so I'm going to try that again. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I feel better. After that presentation, it lets you know that God continues to work in each and every one of us, and I commend that young man for having the courage to do what he did, because like was stated, a lot of us just sit around and talk about it. He was about it, and I commend him for that. My job is with the U.S. Census, is my position is I'm what is called a partnership specialist. The reason I'm here is to see what we can do to help Shreveport and the parish itself gather more money that is owed to the community. What do you mean? What I simply mean is that next year, there will be over $285 billion that will be dispensed throughout the country, is based on the numbers, how many people count. And what we have found and what we're trying this year is we are going to the communities. We're going to the city councils, we're going to the chamber, we're going to the different areas to see what we can do to get the count up. I have information that I will share with you, Mr. Chairman, that will show you that Shreveport is in the red, period. Last year, 10 years ago, when Shreveport, when they did the census, Shreveport, I believe, was at 72%. The year, 10 years before that, it was at 70%. Now, you say, well, what does this mean? As you know, it determines how much money is invested, whether it be in vital programs, housing, education, transportation, employment, health care, public policy. These dollars are set aside to help our communities. For whatever reason, our communities do not want to be counted. Now, to be very truthful with you, this is my second 10 years with the census. I knocked on doors, I would drive up to a residence, there'd be eight cars parked outside. I couldn't even park my car. I'd knock on the door and go inside and ask how many people live there. I was told three, because they had a fear that I was going to take that information, go to the landlord, go to the apartment complex owner, and let them know by law, by law, the U.S. Census cannot share any information that we gather with any other agency, 77 years before we can release that. By law, as an employee of the census, I will have to die before I can tell anything that I've learned. What we simply need is we need the support of the city council. What do we need? We have what we call a CCC committee, which is made up of trusted voices around the community. I'm a preacher. I'm a pastor. Yeah, I'm trusted in my church, but you let me tell somebody I work for the government, okay? All of a sudden, it's a different ballgame. So, what we do is we're asking that we can come back, have a meeting with the city council. I have like about a 20-minute presentation at that time, show you some information, and we would ask that you would give us a resolution from the city council supporting the census. We will help you build your CCC committee. I will come back up and train them to show how they can get out into the community and make a difference. Ladies and gentlemen, what happens 10 years from now? See, once we take the census in 2020, that's it for the next 10 years. There's nothing you can do about it. So, we can continue being in the red if you want to, or we can make a difference. But I need your help. I need your assistance. I live in Hammond, Louisiana. I have no problem driving up here, the four hours or whatever it takes, to have meetings to make sure that our communities benefit. You get tired of those potholes. However, if you don't have money to fix them, that's the way it is. So, again, I didn't ask for much of your time today, but, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make arrangements to be able to come back and do a presentation. All I need is 20 minutes of your time to show you what we can do and how we can do it. You know, I've learned in life that there's two kinds of people, those that sit around and say, "I wonder what happened," and those who make it happen. I've been coming back and forth to Shreveport many times, and I have found that Shreveport is the type of city that believes in making it happen. I know Mr. Willie, we've dealt on different... I know Mr. Willie, we've dealt on different issues, I'm a member of the different organizations, and again, we are proud of what the Shreveport City Council is doing. However, I need your help so that we can make the community get more of the money. Because like I say, $678 billion every year for the next ten years. How much is Shreveport going to get of that apple? It's entirely up to you. Thank you for your time. I will give you this folder, I'll leave this with you. You can contact me if you'd be so kind and let me know when is a good time to come back, and I will come back.
A couple questions, Chip.
Yes, sir.
I got C.A.O. Jones on first.
Yeah, I wanted to let the council know that we have received information about the Complete Count Committee, and we were working on a draft resolution to present to the council so that you all can help us to formally form a committee that would work with the Census Bureau and the partnership team to be able to organize people from the community who is able to help us to champion this effort with making sure that our community is fully counted. So, if the council's interested, we can continue to do that, and we can provide the resolution for you all to review so that we can move forward. Physically, I know we've been tapping our community for the bond, so this will be something else that we would like to band community together to be able to...
I would appreciate that, because Ms. Joy was working with the committee beforehand, but Joy's running for office, so she had to come out of this position and ask me to come up, and again, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and Joy is who reached out to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to welcome Chip. We go back twenty-five, thirty years, and I can say that his energy in working in communities and doing the things that will improve lives has been well documented. So, we're going to work with you in whatever capacity that you would like, we'll support the resolution. But I'm also interested in the presentation, getting others who could take up this information and be prepared to go out in 2020 to make every, I mean, every person count, because there's been some suspicion that Shreveport has lost population. We need to count everybody so that we can maintain the resources that are afforded us. So, thank you for coming up, and we'll be looking forward to working with you, Chip.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bradford. As you know, ten years ago, the city of New Orleans lost one of the representatives. They say it was because of Katrina. However, it was because people did not get out and count. So, the sooner that we can have the training, the better off we are, because we do have some work to do.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Any other questions?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Very sorry. Thank you.
I want to thank you so much for allowing me this time, and I know this is not part of the presentation, but may God continue to bless you.
Thank you.
Is this contact information in there? Mayor Perkins, do you have any distinguished guests or recognitions at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. We, I want to start with some good news. The National Park Service informed us that it will be awarding the city of Shreveport an additional $500,000 for the restoration of old Galilee Baptist Church. They indicated that it was an extremely competitive process, but Shreveport was one of the top contenders. So, the overall monies that'll be going into that project will total about $2 million. Congratulations are also in order for the Sport Tran CEO, Mr. De Naro Washington. Is Director Washington in the audience? He is not. Well, he was named to the Mass Transit's National Forty Under Forty. This is a list of outstanding individuals doing great work in the public transit industry. For those of you who fly and enjoyed the airport this summer, a new flight to Destin, Florida, and larger planes to most of the eight nonstop destinations from Shreveport Regional Airport helped make this summer the busiest since 2000. The traditional summer travel season, May through August, showed an increase of 11 percent from last year's passenger numbers. August, March, the seventeenth consecutive month of increased passenger activity, and to date, 451,000 passengers have used Shreveport Regional Airport since January, which is 41,000 more passengers than last year. Next, I want to thank everyone who helped to pull off this year's Battle on the Border High School Football Event at Independent Stadium. It was a great event and an opportunity for young athletes to show their skills. Our Shreveport Fire Department will host Sparky Day this Wednesday, September 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon in the west parking lot next to Independent Stadium, and they are expecting about 800 students to attend. I want to reiterate my comments from yesterday about our CEO's birthday. For those of you who weren't in attendance for yesterday's planning session, yesterday was our CEO's birthday, so tell her happy belated birthday if you get an opportunity. And lastly, and this is a sad note, we had a new employee, Angela Pierre, that was killed in a car accident on September 21st, and in just her short time with the city, she had already made an impact on those around us, around her, and volunteered for various committees, et cetera. So, please keep her family in your prayers. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Green, is Mr. Green in? Yeah, Mr. Green. Anyone have anything relative to property standards for Mr. Green?
Why do you guys look at me?
I didn't, but I have my email, I know it's ready to go out, I didn't know if... I think everyone else has a message for you later. Thank you for your service, Mr. Green. Mr. Clark? Mr. Thompson, do we have any legislation to be added today?
We do not.
And we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Corbin first, has requested to speak if any member has a question concerning Resolution 120, which will authorize the acceptance of $150,000 donation from Swepco to Sport Tran.
Can't we just make him come up here so we can like tease him a little bit?
Your pleasure, Counselman.
Okay.
We might need him for something later.
Okay. All right. Well, we're glad that you're here. If you had any words, you can come up, but if not...
Thank you, Council, Mayor Perkins. I'll be very brief. As the resolution speaks for itself, we are donating $150,000 to Sport Tran to go toward charging infrastructure for the new electric buses that you see on the streets. This is a match to a recent $200,000 grant that they got through Volkswagen Diesel Settlement Funds through LDEQ. And next Thursday, October 3rd, at the Sport Tran facility at 1:00, Governor Edwards and Secretary Brown from LDEQ will be here, where we will have an actual check presentation. But as I've told you before, Sport Tran is a leader in the country with electric buses, and we are very proud to be a partner with them and be a part of that.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott Ward.
Could you state your name and your address? You have three minutes.
Scott Ward, 604 Parlaime Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. Thank you, Mayor Perkins, staff, and city council members for allowing me to speak today. I'm a citizen and local business owner here in Shreveport. Recently sat on the mayor's 2019 Citizens Bond Committee and had the pleasure of working with Ben Raymond during that entire process. After working through the bond issue, we were able to spend some time discussing his vision for our city as police chief and what he plans to bring to our community with regards to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Not only do I think Ben would be an asset to Shreveport as our next police chief, but I sincerely believe that he has the integrity and common sense to carry out a plan that would create a safer environment for us all. I believe he has the ability to stay out of political red tape and focus on his primary goal, making Shreveport a better place to live, and I'm urging the members of Shreveport City Council to support Mayor Perkins' nomination of Ben Raymond as Shreveport's next police chief. I believe it's crucial, in my humble opinion, in order to begin to right the ship of the city of Shreveport, so I just wanted to share that with the council today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Craig Lee.
That was interesting that I just heard the individual talk about Chief Raymond staying out of red tape. When you clearly see police officers here, he's already in a lot of red tape. This particular individual, not only having participated in the murder of an African-American individual while he served on his undercover role as a drug officer, has already sought to eliminate positions from African-Americans serving in the police department. I've talked to several police officers already, and this person has sought to demote individuals who do not agree with him. And from that overall standpoint, I can tell you that this process has been a sham. It has been a complete sham. And it's interesting that somebody like Wayne Smith, especially, and Tetris, who are more qualified than this individual, are being played in this particular game, yet simultaneously, you want to act like you want people to come back to Shreveport who have education and experience. And the reason that Shreveport continues to fail is because you have so many incompetent people, regardless of color, in key positions, and they are incompetent. Period. You have incompetent people who are at the whim, at the wheel, throughout this entire city and parish, and that's why our numbers have gone, I'm glad the Census guys here, because the numbers have gone from 214,000 in 1994, when I came back here as a pharmaceutical rep, to 188,000 right now, because racism is entrenched in this city. Cronyism is entrenched in this city. Nepotism is entrenched in this city, and it is killing this city. This appointment should be shut down, although I know the city council is going to vote for this because you all think that this bond issue is going to be some Pandora's Box for the city, and it's not. It's not. It didn't happen with Cedric Glover's bond issue, it didn't happen in 1998 when we sought to kill the High Tower bond issue, and it ain't going to happen now. Period. This person is not qualified to be the city police chief, he was not qualified by this committee, and this is a sham that he would be allowed to now be ushered in when you have legitimate, qualified people who should be in this position. Thank you very much.
Parker Brown, 8706 Glenmore Drive. In my opinion, this is simple. Chief Raymond scored the highest test scores. He was appointed by two mayors to be interim chief, and the report that I believe Counselman Nicholson posted shows crime going down pretty dramatically. So, I don't... Check the report. Anyway, sorry. As far as social media goes, people are saying, well, the mayor doesn't deserve any credit, and he's just doing this for the bond issue. I disagree with that. So, I feel that Mayor Perkins saw the most qualified person, and he had the courage to make that choice, and I commend him for that. So, I mean, I'm proud of the mayor for doing that. I'm also proud that the mayor has a record of putting African-Americans in leadership positions across the board, so our whole city can move forward. Everyone's quick to criticize him and anyone else when things don't go his way, or their way, but I want to give credit where credit's due, and good job, Mr. Mayor, and I think Chief Raymond, if appointed, will do an excellent job for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Bobby Henderson.
I'm Bobby T. Henderson. I reside at 2800 West Caperton Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, in the Queensbury area. To our Honorable Mayor Perkins, Chairman, and City Council Members, I stand before you today at the urge of many current Shreveport police officers, officers who individually wanted to be here, but due to the work, they could not. Mayor Perkins, we would ask you to reconsider your recommendation for chief of police, but instead of appearing individually, they chose to choose one voice. That was me to speak to you. And I say to you, do not move in a haste on such an important decision today. Sadly, the department under Chief Raymond's commands has been divided along racial lines, where it appears relationships are more important than confidence. And it is now becoming evident that the division, separation, is spreading like Wi-Fi into our communities. Yes, we want, yes, we too would like to move forward, but officers are asking that we do so with a chief that will earn their respect and confidence, and most importantly, lead accordingly with fairness in mind. As evidenced by the large number of officers today, and the many more who could not be here because of their work obligation, we simply say to you, Mayor Perkins, and council members, please, 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 please reconsider your recommendation for the police chief and explore other available options, which would be a truth for the right thing. Do the right thing. Don't make friends. Do the right thing, and when you do what's right, God will lead you the right way. Thank you.
Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana. This is funny. Why did the jelly roll? It saw the apple turn over. Now, I'm going to say something. I was watching just yesterday, and I got the news that Mayor Perkins made the choice very well of making Ben Raymond the new chief of police, and then I switched back over to Dr. Phil to see what he was up to, as I was switching back and forth. Mayor Perkins saw the track record, which does not lie, and he decided the right thing to do was to go ahead and make the right decision and pick the right man for the job. This is just a wonderful and super thing, as I see it. Ben Raymond has been doing a great and fantastic job since November. Now, three other people were recommended, but I thought maybe Raymond was overlooked, and I feel stupid for even thinking such a thing. Now, I was asked by a few people, what happened with that situation? How would I know? I don't have a crystal ball or a deck of cards, and I'm not a gypsy. If I were, I wouldn't be here today. So, what I'm saying is that I know, once again, congratulations go to the new chief of police, Ben Raymond. Also, people have been making a lot of complaints over at Crestwell and Herndon to remove the flashing lights and install a new traffic light. There have been quite a few times that we've had wrecks there that shouldn't be happening at that intersection, but they have, and a lot of whining complaints have been made. Whining complaints. We don't like this, we don't like that. Stop it, just like a red light. Anyway, traffic engineering, if they'll look into this, we would like to see the... Anyway, traffic engineering, if they'll look into this, we would like to see the flashing lights taken down and a traffic light put up, because only might wind up getting hurt or possibly killed. We don't need that. So, if you'll get this taken care of, for traffic engineering to look into that, we would appreciate it. And do you know what you'd get if you crossed a telephone pole with an elephant? A telephant.
But you didn't like my joke about the navigator?
Good afternoon, everyone. Liz Swain, 416 Cotton Street, downtown Shreveport. In my job, there is not a week that goes by that I don't have multiple encounters with Shreveport Police. Actual safety and perception of security and safety can make or break every positive thing happening downtown. So, I work very closely with police, and I have for the entirety of my time at the Downtown Development Authority. Chief Raymond has been the best police chief that I have worked with, bar none, in my time with the Downtown Development Authority. I call him, he calls me back. You know that's important. I ask him a question, he gives me an answer. I tell him a concern, he works to correct that concern. I've found him to be responsive, willing to listen, smart, and willing to try new ideas. He's been the first chief to support officers and initiatives that are really beginning to make a difference downtown, and I do worry a lot if he is not in that position in the future. He's the first chief that I personally have ever felt comfortable making suggestions to about important things downtown. I have had totally different experiences with other police chiefs. I have been rebuffed, or patronized, or completely ignored. There are difficult issues, such as a fatal shooting at a downtown nightclub. There's been drug use in a very aggressive transient population downtown. All of those things combined could bring to a screeching halt the very positive forward momentum we are seeing in our downtown, the very positive things that we are seeing, the economic development, the money being spent. Chief Raymond understands that crimes, both small and large, are important, and he deals with them directly and immediately. Folks, I am never, ever going to say anything negative about any of the fine people who are in the running for this position, but I think it is very important for me to tell you how I feel about the importance of Chief Raymond's positives. And I would also like to, just for a moment, there are several people who came from downtown buildings, businesses, these are owners, developers, business owners, who wanted to speak today, who got here a little too late to sign up. There are several of them who are back here, who are not going to be able to speak, who also came to show their support for Chief Raymond, so I would like to acknowledge them as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Mr. Lester Smith?
He's here.
Why did the jelly roll? Billy Roy Wayne, 6144 Farrington Court, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129, president of the Fairway Forest Neighborhood Association. From the very beginning of this police chief selection process, there has been a cloud hanging over the city and the police department. I make this statement based upon my observation of the process and my experiences learned in similar matters in the past. First of all, Mr. Mayor, the process was void of community representation from the aspect of your advisory council. The very persons who shall be affected by the next police chief was the very same group whose voice and presence were admitted or omitted from the selection group.
That's right.
Secondly, not much was known by the community once your council went behind closed doors. This is not to say that this process was overly secretive, but that the process could have been a bit more clear. And finally, growing up as a child, I never quite understood the difference between a lollipop and a sucker. All I remember is that both were designed to be eaten or devoured. Now, I'm not quite sure if this analogy is the best to use, but this selection process has given many in the community the appearance that they were either used as lollipops or taken as suckers. Perhaps this was not the intent, perhaps this was not the intent, but the perception is there. Kudos to your administration and to this council for the untiring efforts you make to make, to see to it that this city, and in this case, the police department, move forward and remain unified. Thank you.
Mr. Roy Carey.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening. Mayor, I just heard you make the term, say something, see something wrong, do something. That's why I'm here this evening. First of all, let's talk about the process, as Billy Wayne just discussed. When I look at the members who did serve, I see that they have an extensive amount of credibility in law enforcement, in crime, in policing. They were very diverse. Now, if you and I had to have open-heart surgery, and a medical board, after reviewing all the prospects, as Officer Raymond was in that group also, and they recommend that those three people, none of you would choose outside of that realm because your life would be at stake. I simply submit to you that this evening, there is a cloud, and this community is disturbed, very much disturbed. Mr. Chairman, I love you, I respect you, been knowing you and your family for a long time. I've heard from the community people in our city, in our community, who say that your mother would turn over in her grave for you to override the mayor and make a decision that was not chaotic, was not a crisis, just because you were mayor potent. I've shared on this council, more of you have shared on this council before, we've never taken the position to take up an issue that was important as an appointment of a department head, make a decision just as the mayor goes out of town one day. It was not necessary. It was not a chaos situation. There was no crisis. And if the charter allows us to do that, I'm going to submit to this community that we change the charter, because that could happen again. Anybody can run up, I'm the mayor, I'm running this department. No, you select the qualified people. Steve Proder, Sheriff, Josh Stott, County Crimes District Attorney, Victor Jones, Malakati Parish Sheriff, Laurie Ryan, City Attorney, Ron Mesota, Defense Attorney, E.J. Marsh, retired Assistant Police Chief, Jim Talafonero, retired police officer and former Shreveport Cato crimes stopper's director, and Jared Bowman, you sat on that committee. And if you all couldn't come together as a group and put him in the firing list, it says a lot about his integrity. We're not talking about counter, we're not talking about, when he put the budget together, he did this, he did that. There is a big difference in a police chief and an accountant. There are a lot of people who can count money, but there are very few people who can bring a department together to address crime, bring a city together, and unite them. I'm very displeased when I did not hear him come.
Mr. Chairman, the speaker's time has expired.
I'm a former councilman, I've done this, I've watched, I've been doing, I've been there.
How much time do you think you need?
I just need a couple more minutes, Mr. ...
Mr. Chairman, I need to give him two minutes. Mr. Chairman? Have a motion.
There's a, all right, there's a motion on the table.
Mr. Chairman, I second a motion, but I want to, I want to put ...
Well, two more minutes, Mr. Bradford.
Because, I mean, because we tried to keep order, and you understand that, Council ...
Mr. Bradford, I'm not disorderly. I am speaking my voice, and I have a voice in this city, I'm a bill clerk, and I don't like to hold a counter against a public who feels bad on the ground.
No, 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 no. It's about ...
No, no, I said, we want people to come, we just honor them. We took six or seven minutes, just taking our, I know Artie Robinson is a great man, and we don't have a problem with that. This is a critical era, this is a critical crisis, I don't want to see another Huck Spitz itch come up in this city like before.
Mr. Carey, if we did need more time, will you just take a little step from the microphone, because the transmission will come through better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carey, I've offered the motion that you have two more minutes, and he's seconding it. We're waiting on the chair. If you hold up, the chairman will compare the process.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford, this motion by Councilman Bradford is seconded by ...
No, it's motion by me.
I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Green, and seconded by Councilman Bradford, to extend the two minutes. They in a discussion? Please, look.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. I'm actually here to speak from personal firsthand experience that I've had with Ben Raymond, as a member of, and in support of Ben Raymond. And again, this is from firsthand experience, I'm not going to really speak to anything about the process, but about my experience with him, serving on the Board of Directors for the Shreveport, North Shreveport Business Association, as well as, you know, speak to the fact that I am a criminal defense attorney, work in public defender, work in Cato, and have appeared in Shreveport City Court as well. One thing I really focused on when there was an announcement about the search was the mayor's, I think the number one priority was picking someone who understood and implemented community-oriented policing. I think that is extremely critical, especially in my experience as an attorney working in criminal law. One specific event that Ben was at, that the North Shreveport Business Association sponsored, and the Shreveport Police Department, as well as Cherokee Park Elementary School, it was a community resource fair, and it was an amazing event. It was one that I attended, I believe Councilman Bradford was there. And it was an awesome event, and it really shows the fact that he sees that as an important quality in being the chief. Because again, this is, it was a resource fair, there was people there on behalf of domestic violence, there was a gun safety demonstration. And this is, this was a community that is not, you know, that are fearful of police. I've represented these people through the Public Defender's Office, and again, I commend him in that realm in being involved in this community, and making it an environment where people trust law enforcement. Because even though I am a criminal defense attorney and practice in criminal law, I have no problem giving up business in that no one is breaking the law, that people are comfortable in approaching law enforcement and preventing crime overall. And people who have issues, whether it's drug issues or domestic violence, I've seen it firsthand, what Mr. Raymond has done as soon as he jumped in. I mean, the guy is everywhere, as it relates to my realm. He has spoken at our meetings at the North Shreveport Business Association, he keeps us informed. He is, he's present everywhere that I go. You know, I'm not anyone special, but I just have to say from my experience, I commend him on that, and I commend the mayor on making that a priority, because I think that is so crucial. And when you work with people in these realms, you really have to understand the importance, and it makes a huge difference. So again, he's a good guy, great leader. I believe he is the best choice to lead the Shreveport Police Department and help our community be safer, more reunited. Thank you all for your time, and God bless.
Rudolph Glass, 1735 Arlington, Shreveport. I'm here to speak on the issue of the police chief. Several times, I started to write, but I basically got sick to my stomach. Hearing the things that I've heard, videos I've seen, and if we know this information, I know you all know it. Mayor Perkins, Jerry Bowman, the fiasco that you all pulled.
Come on, brothers, speak up.
Stevie Wonder could have seen what was coming.
That's right.
You want people to trust you? You want people to stay in the city? You're not doing a good job. I'm the president of the Lakeside Area Neighborhood Association. I have vested interest in my community. I live there. I want to see good things happen. I'm going to do things to make good things happen. Ben Raymond has not lived in Shreveport. Has never lived in Shreveport. So, for him to come to Shreveport to be the police chief, to take care of issues here, he doesn't live here.
I'm my brother.
Does he really care? His family is not here. They won't have to deal with what we have to deal with. Something happens at his house, it's in Bowe, we don't know about it unless we hear about it. There was an article on who is Ben Raymond. Quite sure a lot of you've seen it. There is no way that I would have even wanted him to even be in the running. I really don't understand, but I will say this, if you all continue to do what you could possibly do, mark my word, you will be sorry.
Huey Horn, I'm sorry if I'm misreading your name, 504 Texas Street.
Sorry for the attire. They caught me on the bush hog. My name is Huey Horn, residence is 504 Texas Street, downtown Shreveport. Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, I just wanted to say that my support for Ben Raymond is there. I thank you for the choice and for picking him. I have a business in downtown Shreveport, and every time we have called the police to deal with situations in our parking lot or in our building, the police have responded quickly without hesitation, and it has, downtown Shreveport has been cleaned up, or is in the process of being cleaned up, and for that, I'm very thankful. It's, it's much more business-friendly than it has been in the past, and I want to, again, say thank you for your choice, and I just plead with you to confirm it. Thank you.
Mr. Marvin Mohammed. Mr. Marvin Mohammed.
Come on, Marvin.
Uh, Marvin Mohammed, 2808 Hershey D. Wilson, arise to speak, uh, on the appointment of, uh, Ben Raymond as chief, and I'd be very succinct. We haven't forgotten, and many might not know, that it was a 23-year-old Ben Raymond that gunned down a 21-year-old Willie D. Davis.
Come on, brother.
In a shooting that is, that is best described as suspect.
Yeah.
They, they described it as, as a self-inflicted gunshot wound from the top of his head. What young black male kills himself in that manner? The black community has little or no regard for this man, to actually, to send officers into our neighborhoods and can, and patrol them with, with fairness. We haven't forgotten a Ben Raymond that was over at the narcotics unit, when 14,000 pills came up missing. Under his direct supervision, not one officer, one, was disciplined, fired, suspended, or anything. Years, two years later, four years later, a officer that was under his direct charge in the narcotics unit was fired, during a, for stealing possessions out of, out of a, from a, from a drug bust. Is this the type of man that we believe that can, that can supervise an entire police department? I say, I say, I say not. As has been already said, he doesn't even live inside the city limits, he hasn't voted here, he doesn't live here, he's not vested here. We haven't forgotten about Anthony Charles.
Alright, alright.
The assassination of Anthony Charles has not been forgotten.
Yeah.
This happened under his charge. We haven't forgotten that a black man was subdued on the ground, was kicked in the face. With steel-toed boots, and then tased, we haven't forgotten. This is a, this is a chief that, that's having control over his men, either he doesn't have control, or he has given the green light, that this is the way that he wants, that he wants to be dealt with. These are the thing, these are the many reasons why we believe that Ben Raymond should not be appointed chief. When you look at the room, you see white officers on one side, and you see black officers on the other side. How can the city be safe if our Shreveport Police Department, men who are sworn to not only protect this city, but have to have each other six out in the streets? Will be burying one officer after another.
Mr. Chairman, the time, speaker's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
James Carstensen, Mr. James Carstensen. Mr. John Settle.
John Settle for Tealwood. I'm speaking as a citizen of Shreveport, a person who decided to live here as an adult. I was reared in South Carolina, went to law school in Georgia, served in the Air Force in California, and was transferred here as a captain, a judge-advocate-general. I decided to stay here and help build this community, part of that, I had the first black law partner in Shreveport. I also helped the NAACP in a lawsuit and was given an award for them, and I, I, I did not interrupt y'all, I think it'd be nice if you reciprocate. But here's where we are today, I believe that in the charter, and I believe in the state law concerning civil service, let's look at that. The state civil service law actually trumps the charter, the state civil service law says that the mayor is the appointing authority of the police chief. The charter says the same thing, the charter does not require the mayor to have a committee or to follow the committee. I want the city to follow the state law and the charter, and I'd like to commend Dr. Sergeant Michael Carter yesterday and his comments, and I, and I'm going to read some of them, this is a man that wanted this job, was obviously disappointed, but he addressed y'all and said this, addressed us. "I think it's time for everybody to put this behind us and move forward, I know our department needs to move forward. I'm showing unity in moving forward, I was part of the process, I was proud to be a part of it. I took my opportunity, put my credentials forward, and stand on my credentials. The choice has been made, now I would ask you to confirm Chief Ben Raymond as chief of police." I think that says it all, thank you.
Mr. Keith Brown.
Good afternoon, glad to be here, I really don't know what type of setting this is going to be, if I could actually question, ask some questions or whatever, but it seems like y'all are just kind of listening, I don't know if it's going to go anywhere or do anything, you know, y'all are just sitting there and listening to people, I don't know what kind of action is going to be taken, but since I am here, I did want to ask a couple of questions, um, because I'm, I'm, I'm really.
State your name and address.
My name is Keith Brown, um, 3700 Michigan Boulevard, people say that, really don't know how the protocol goes, but I'm just a little confused, I need some clarification on a couple of things, um, I know we have an Internal Affairs Department, um, here in the city, um, but I just wonder what are they actually here for, what do they do? Uh, because I had, I had a complaint, why should I file a complaint to them, and, um, they didn't actually do what they told me they were going to do, which is review my case, it was concerning a, a traffic accident, um, including an officer, and Internal Affairs told me they were going to review this case, but they never did, they passed it back to the police department, so this is my personal issue that I'm bringing, but it kind of correlates with everything that's going on, actually electing, uh, Ben Raymond, he actually gave me a call, talked to me, uh, listened to my story, and, um, I told him, I said, well, chief, uh, Internal Affairs told me that they would investigate my case, and that they would actually do a thorough investigation separate from the police department, that's why they're separate, and they did not, it was passed back to the police department, and they actually researched it, uh, which is unfair. Um, that's like saying that, um, Green or whoever, uh, Councilman Green would actually review something that happened with Bowman, we need somebody outside of the circle to actually look in it on that investigation, they never did, so that was a lie that was sold to me, and it, it didn't sit well with me, um, thinking that justice would actually be served, because on the scene, a police officer, whoever, he puts down is what the insurance company is going to believe, so we need people who actually are, people of integrity to actually patrol in our streets, and it comes from the head, anything from the head rolls down. Only thing I've seen in these last, uh, few months, uh, since we have the acting police chief is death, people have been dying, um, getting shot, and the only thing I've seen him doing is justifying what's been going on. I haven't really seen him smile, even show a smile on, on TV, or even show that he's like a friendly-type person, um, so there's just some things that I should have, but we have the, um, Internal Affairs Department, I have other people that said they sent stuff to Internal Affairs and haven't even researched this, what are they even doing? Like, only thing I hear is that all the steps of all the incidents that have been happening dealing with the police department, it's been checked out, checks and balances, everything's checked out, what mistake has the police department made? I, I mean, they had, they're nothing wrong, every incident, yeah, we did everything right, protocol was taken, yeah, he was supposed to be, supposed to have been shot. Uh, like the guy said, um, the guy who killed himself shot himself from the top of the head, who does that? A guy who's running for his life, who's going to shoot theirself in the chest while I'm running for my life? This guy was running full speed, so in the, in the middle, he's full speed spraying, he pointed the gun to himself, shot himself in the chest, and the officer's still shooting? Who is really researching this stuff? Who is doing something about this, no one is saying anything, people just letting it happen.
Mr. Brown, I just wanted to say that under normal circumstances, we don't deliberate between speakers, and this is the public speaking section. Occasionally, we do ask questions of people to give them more time to express themselves, but since we have so many people that want to speak today, we're trying to just keep everyone of their time, and we're not asking a lot of questions, but we are listening, thank you.
William Lewis.
Are we this exciting in the room?
No.
Very exciting, isn't it?
Would you state your name and address, sir, please?
My name is William Lewis, and I live at 4111 Pines Road, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm a classroom teacher, and I've taught college and high school, and I've lived near the Bill Cockrell Recreational Park intersection for about nine years. At this intersection, I have seen numerous near accidents and accidents involving both pedestrians and vehicles. Children and pets, individuals in wheelchairs visit the park routinely. My neighbors and I feel that it's just a matter of time before a real bad accident happens at this intersection. In addition, summer and fall are here, and this intersection will get even more crowded with people, pets, and vehicles, and even at 7:00 PM these days, it's dark at 7 o'clock, and I still see children going across to the park, and it's dark. More and more businesses are opening up on Pines Road, drawing more people and vehicles. Speeding vehicles and large trucks coming off of I-20 and I-220 routinely do more than 40 miles an hour speed limit coming down that road. Something serious should be done about that, a solution would be perhaps a traffic light or something between Western Hills Church and Santa Monica. I haven't closed the map in case you wanted to see that, but I just wanted to make you aware of something, uh, real bad could happen, uh, at the intersection. It's very, um, if you've ever seen the intersection, now you have four or five things to do at one time. There's a lot to think about, yes, oh, yesterday, day before yesterday, there was a bad accident there last week, Thursday. In the last month, two bad accidents right there at the intersection where, where people drive into the park.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for coming, I'm trying to be consistent in keeping time, but.
I'm sorry.
But I certainly will ask that our traffic engineer evaluate this intersection, and, uh, we always appreciate citizens calling issues like this to our attention, so thank you for coming.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Albert Brown.
Good evening, everybody. To the mayor, oh, 439 East State First, Shreveport, Louisiana, to the mayor, the chairman, to the councilman, citizens of Shreveport. There's a saying that you, how hungry are you? And the guy said, "I'm so hungry, I can eat an elephant," and he said, "How you eat an elephant?" He said, "One bite at a time." And I thank you, Mayor, brother mayor, for getting Linwood and Line Avenue and everything, now I'm up here for something else. I've been going down to the Urban Development Center for the last several weeks, and because I'm looking at the neighborhoods that I want to get all these old houses out of here, and trees and all that stuff out of this place, and I've been going down there to the, the Development Center, and I sit down there and put all my meat in them meters, to put all my money in them meters, you know, which it don't no problem to me, you know, because I'm doing this voluntarily, I work for BIC because I care ministry, this is the ministry that God gave me. And they keep putting me off, they said they were going to put me on email, they hadn't done that, they said that they was going to call me, they hadn't done that, Brother Bradford, Brother Bosch, Brother Green, Sir Fleury, Brother Nicholson, Brother Bowman, Brother Floorman, Brother Flo... They haven't done nothing, I, they haven't done nothing, but like I said, they're paper pushing me. And I want to ask you all, what can y'all do to help me, to get them, get a file to them, so we can start getting some things done with this? Because I'm not playing a game, I'm for real what I'm doing, that's why I keep coming, and I'm going to keep knocking on this door. Because God, thank God that we done got Linwood, we're going to get Lin, get in Line Avenue, now we want to start working on getting all these trees and all these old houses out of here, because, you know, like you said, we want our city to look good, and like the brother just said, we got all this money, then where's it going? So, you know, but like the saying, it's three sayings, that there's people that talk and don't do nothing, there's the people that look and don't do nothing, but there's the people that see it and do something about it, and that's what I'm doing, I'm just not talking, sitting back, I want to see something done. I want to see something done, brother Perkin, I think you care, I think all of y'all care, but the people, we're crying out because we care, we care about our city. And I want to ask you all, Brother Perkin, please somebody, help me, help me get this Urban Development Center people to, to get them, get a file of them, say, "Okay, brother Brown, we hear you, okay, let's start getting something done," instead of, they get me down there, and they tell me, "Oh, we got, we got..." They got milk meetings I ain't never seen in my life. I think they back there eating lunch, because they're not, you know, they don't ever call me, they don't ever do nothing.
Mr. Brown, thank you, your time has expired, but I.
So, can somebody talk to me after that?
Mr. Mayor, after those folks are done with lunch, you think they could call Mr. Brown?
We'll, we'll get in touch with him, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry Mc... Jerry McCall. Mr. McCall. Ms. Tiffany Giovanna. Ms. Giovanna, or is that Mr. McCall? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I also have two requests to speak from lawyers relating to an appeal we're going to consider, I understand that we'll hear from those lawyers later in the meeting. Those are all the timely requests to speak.
We have no executive appointments today, uh, to be considered for, yeah, today, uh, Mr. Thompson, can we start with items to be adopted, resolutions, uh, Ms., Ms., Ms. Jackin?
Resolution 118, authorizing KP Summer Hill.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, point of, point of order, the clerk has stepped out of the room, but during, during the commentary, we received a document, from the mayor's office, and I'm, I'm wondering, is, when would be the appropriate time to take that up? The clerk is back in the room, Mr., Mr. clerk, during the commentary, we received a document from the mayor's office on a, on a, on an executive appointment. When would be the, when would be the time to take that up?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so you can at any time to add it to the agenda, um, I think that we've, uh, passed the stage, I believe, where we add to the agenda.
Where they just can't.
I'm sorry?
The executive.
No, that's, that's.
You can make a motion now if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the rules to, um, take up the appointment that the mayor has submitted to the, to the council.
Mr. Chairman, uh, there are two motions that would be involved, one is a motion to add the appointment of Ben Raymond, um, to the agenda, and, uh, that requires a unanimous vote.
Okay.
That would be the first motion.
So the motion on the floor is that we suspend the rules?
I second that motion.
Uh, I, I, Mr. Thompson, if I understand your counsel to us correctly, we must first move to add the item to the agenda, have a unanimous vote, and then consider the suspension of the rules by second, or is that right?
Yes, I guess technically, Mr. Bradford is correct. Since we passed that point, we can suspend the rules to determine whether or not we add it to the agenda, and then have to suspend the rules again.
I'm glad you're both here.
All right, the move by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. And motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Now the motion to add it to the agenda.
I also move that we add the mayor's com, uh, appointment to the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Bradford.
Thank you for your time.
And second by Councilman Butcher to add this item to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, under state law, you also need to ask whether or not there is anyone for or against adding the item to the agenda.
That is true. All right. Is there anyone present here?
Yes.
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 All right. And if, if that, um, those who have to, who want to speak for or against adding it to the agenda?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Is there anyone present?
Yes.
Who would like to speak against adding, against or for adding this to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
How would you like them to?
Mr. Chairman, can, could we, for order purposes, could we take maybe a five-minute break, let people fill out a request to speak?
There's no more request forms out there.
Let them line up.
There's no more request forms out there.
Oh, I mean, we get you some, but I just
You can do what we did during the last thing, like this, let them line up.
Okay.
In, in lieu of that, I would like to suggest that everyone that'd like to speak, line up in the, in the aisle over here, and then as the, as a person finishes speaking, the next person can come up.
Ma'am, if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Virginia Evans. I live at twenty-eight seventeen Hershey D. Wilson in the Cockroo. And I have objection to this. I came not to speak, but after listening to what's going on, y'all been hoodwinking these people? This was a setup. He didn't even go out of town, and all of a sudden, you recommend to put them running around. What was the purpose of the bull? That was a lot of bull. You talking about a man that has allowed this police officer to kick people in the head, shoot people in the back, a police car missing for two weeks, and don't nobody know about it. This is not what we want. This man, I have no objection to him. I don't know anybody that I want to criticize, but this is separating our people. This separation in the police department, and this gonna cause a lot of issues and a lot of problems. And I don't believe that was purposely done like that, but I believe you hoodwinked us real good.
Sorry?
I'd like to remind everyone to step a little bit further from the, the mic than you think you should, because we'll still pick you up, and we'll pick you up better. You can get a little closer, but you don't want to get real close, because they get static.
Can you hear me now?
That's good.
Good evening. I'm Alvin Oliver, two-three-one-nine Fernbrook Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I happen to know Jerry Bowman. I grew up with him. I'm familiar with Willie Bradford. I tagged all of you in my Facebook post. I tagged you, Mayor Perkins. I used to, until you unfriended me, or blocked me, or being rude. But let me first say this. As the mayor, if you can take kudos and accolades, certainly you can take constructive, constructive criticism, and that's all I was giving to you. I sometimes posted pictures of former New Orleans Mayor Ray Nagin, former Detroit Mayor Kwame Kilpatrick. I posted those on your page, not to antagonize you, but to say to you, don't get caught up in this foolishness like they did. Let me say this, I also heard from a lot of white folk, and I'm not for or against white folk or black folks. I'm mixed with white and black. So, let me say this, I'm not for or against Ben Raymond. I don't know Ben Raymond. Congratulations on your appointment, Chief Raymond, but let me say this, what I have a problem with is how we arrived at getting Chief Raymond. Now, let me say this, let me back up. James Fleury, you were on Kiel Radio. You said that Chief Wayne Smith was too old to be a chief. You said that, you said he was too old. We needed somebody young, new, with fresh ideas. Well, if Ja, well, if Wayne Smith is too old, aren't you too old to sit on the council? If Wayne Smith is too old, isn't Prater too old to still be the sheriff? You see? And so, what's good for one is good for another. And I also hear some of these good white folks standing in here saying, what a great job Raymond has done to reduce crime. Where? Where you live? Because it's not been reduced where we come from.
That's right, brother.
You understand? I come from Queensborough, but I thank God, I was fortunate enough to be blessed, to get behind some gates. But I still never forgot where I came from, and I don't to this day. And I keep my ears to the street because I'm in the street, and I know what the people are saying. Some of you, sometimes you get in office, and you forget about those that got you there. You forget about the demographic that brought you here. You understand? Let me say this, like I said before, we have no problem with Ben Raymond being appointed, at least I don't. But for us to arrive at that, this is how we got there. We had civil service, uh, uh, excuse me, we had a selection committee that you, good mayor, put in place of professional law enforcement personnel. Okay? And so, Willie Bradford, James Fleury said, "No, we're going to give them a no vote."
Mr. Oliver, in interest of
Then, then Bowman turned around
Your time is expiring.
At the, at your absence, and then voted him in.
Mr. Oliver, your time is up.
Hoodwinked. Okay? So, that's what we got a problem with. Thank you.
Thanks. The last person to speak will be Ms. Brown.
My name is Ernest Small. I live at thirty-one twenty-three Exposition Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, seventy-one eleven oh nine. Okay. Mr. Perkins, I voted for you on the strength that you was a young military man, and that you was gonna stick up. I had no idea that you was gonna let Steve Prater and Bowman tell you what to do at the matter. I did not vote for Bowman. I did not vote for Prater. I voted for you and got all the senior citizens, and I know to vote for you, to stand up. So, I looked at it when you said the committee. The committee said, "We do not want Ben." Okay, there were three left. We wanted you to choose from those people. We do not want Ben. If we want, if Prater want Ben, Prater old enough to retire, let Ben take his job.
Come on, brother.
Again, I think that's what you're hearing most of, is the procedure and the process. As I was so rudely cut off before, I'm here to say that the process, and Mayor, I want to remind you, several of these members on this body are not up for reelection. You consider you are up for reelection. People in Shreveport don't forget when you forget them. Now, the people that were nominated, certainly one of those persons was qualified, because we got qualified law enforcement people that are choosing, and you sat on there, Mr. Bowman. If you and Steve Prater could not convince those members that you worked with that Ben Raymond was qualified, then why do you want to come out of the room and convince Shreveport that he's qualified? Now, I want to say this, I want to say this, that when Hudson, uh, I want a chief who takes a stand. Let me know where you stand. When this man was kicked in and was handcuffed, that was, that was rude. I don't want to see what happened across America, where Shreveport is in a big riot, because the police chief won't stand up and say, "He's wrong, and I don't stand for that, and we're gonna clean that up." We protested when Jim Roberts was police chief, Mayor Hightower was here. And we said from that day forward, when he defending an officer for shooting a man when he was running, we said that he came out too early and took a defense before the case was investigated. And we stayed on, on Mayor Hightower until we seen that he changed and appointed another chief of police, because we want to see Shreveport united, not divided. If a police chief cannot bring his own department together, how can he bring a city together? And there are a lot of officers who won't, I said, let me fill you information, I instituted the Public Safety Board when I became city councilman in nineteen ninety. There was none. And I wanted it to be, because I wanted citizens and elected officials to make decisions. And that was the origin of that board, so that we could make sure that we have a chief that is accountable to us and accountable to this body. And any of you who sat there and see this process, and you're for reelection, I don't care what office it is next time, we don't, I'm gonna be the drum major, the campaign to issue, because you won't stand for the people who you represent. Now, I hear white folks coming down, and I have any problem with white folks coming down telling and giving their part, but downtown Shreveport, I don't live there. Queensborough, Allendale, Lakeside, every time you turn your TV on in the morning, there's a shooting. Everybody say, "Crime went down. He ain't been in office long enough for crime to go." There's no measuring stick. So, what we need to do is look at those three other people. Mayor, you take a backbone and say, "I'm gonna go with my committee. I entrusted them with this duty and this responsibility, and I'm gonna allow them to make their decision." Thank you.
Uh, Marvin Mohammed, twenty-eight zero eight, Hershey D. Wilson. The most compelling argument that I believe that could be made today is one that we see in this room. Again, we have one police department, but black officers on one side, white officers on another side. We, this council have to ask itself, do they want to be the one that's responsible to, to widen a, a golf that already exists in the Shreveport Police Department? We have to stop, listen, we have to stop denying that racism exists. The Shreveport Police Department is honeycomb, honeycomb with white supremacist members and sympathizers. This is not what I'm saying, this is what the FBI report said that was, that was, that was sent out nationwide. I'm very hard on police officers, black and white, anybody that know me. My own brother is a law enforcement officer in another state, and I'm tough on him. But if these black officers can stand tall today, if they brave enough, bold enough, and courageous enough to be here today, then I'm, then I'm brave enough to stand with them. We have to really consider what we're about to do. We're about to turn the Shreveport Police Department into a power cage. We're, we're, we're about to be the laughing stock of, of America. Mayor Perkins? Mayor Perkins, I say to you, you're about to lose your power base. Black people believe in you? And it, and, and if the four black councilmen, and I have to put it on the four black councilmen. And the reason why, and with, and Councilman Bradford knows this more than anybody, in nineteen seventy-eight, bold, bold men pushed forward and sued the city of Shreveport. It wouldn't be a Levett Fuller if it wasn't for the Bull lawsuit. We have to understand this, it wouldn't be a Mayor Perkins if it wasn't for the, a, a Bull lawsuit, because of the wickedness that existed in this city. We have to stop denying that reality. Thank you.
Rudolph Glass, seventeen thirty-five, Arlington, Shreveport. I was told last week that the city of Shreveport was headed to be controlled by blacks. And as I see things happening the way they are now, not only that, sent a video of a backdoor meeting that was held before the election. How can you tell me that the city is headed that way with what I'm witnessing now? That I don't understand. A lot of the policemen in the back, I know a lot of them. They have never breathed a word to me about what they felt about Ben Raymond. That's integrity. Everything I found out, I found out other ways. My son is twenty-five years old, he's a detective of another city. He considered coming home. No. You're not coming to this mess. I don't want you to come to this. He's twenty-five years old, he made detective in less than three years in the department. But I don't want to hear. I love him, and I want to be around him, but I do not want him to come to this. Now, I don't know if you have kids? But I tell you what, or grandkids, because I'm here now because of my kids and my grandkids. I saw a census of my great, my, my grandmother, I was a little girl, nineteen, twenty, in Shreveport. And I would like to stay in Shreveport. But I myself have had thoughts of leaving Shreveport. Because when I come down to this council, and I see some stuff firsthand that goes on, it makes me sick to my stomach. People that we vote in, that we supposed to have trust in, making backdoor deals and lying to you in your face? That's not right. And you know it's not right. So, like I said again, if you do what you could possibly do, you will be sorry.
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect. Roy Carey made a very good point. Sixteen years ago, Marquis Hessmit was murdered by the Shreveport Police Department, shot in the back about twenty times, unjustified. The city of Shreveport made international news. We were featured on CNN approximately three times. That's bad for business. You go back to the early nineties, mid-nineties, around about nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, there were over ten black males murdered in the city of Shreveport by the SPD. White police officers murdering black citizens. And this has been protocol, and as Roy talked about, we were vigilant to put pressure on the Hightower administration until Jim Roberts was out of here. Now, I know deals have been cut in order to have this particular individual placed as the police chief. So, I know nothing that we're saying is gonna make any difference, but we're gonna be on the record. We're gonna let the record reflect. Because the interesting thing about this, this hypothetical bond issue that hopefully is gonna get voted down, I really hope it gets voted down. Because for, for you all to believe that a bond issue is a panacea to anything is foolishness. It's foolishness. And, and, and to have the black councilmen tricked into believing that white folks are going to buy into voting for something when now, on the front end of Mayor Perkins' administration, there's already been a theft of millions of dollars based on the debacle with the insurance fraud that was played on the city. If you really believe that white voters are going to vote for this bond issue, we'll see. And, and I'll say this in closing, the city of Shreveport has to pay for each lawsuit that comes through this particular place. It's impacting us based on who is at the helm. We've had lawsuit after lawsuit, and as Marvin Mohammed just talked about, the individual on Monk House Drive who was kicked in the head with steel toe boots, another lawsuit. All of that starts with leadership. You had the candidates, identi- You had the candidates identified from the so-called committee, and those are the people that should be represented as the next police chief. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Auckland Brown. I live at thirty-five, I mean thirty-four, thirty-nine West College. And I, I sat in here and I noticed when one of the people came up to speak that we have white police officers on this side, blacks on this side, so that kind of bothered me. If we have that much division in our police department, something needs to be looked into. Um, I've met Chief Raymond before, and I must say, I had, you know, uh, it was nothing but one of the things that I had heard about him. But coming to this meeting today, it's totally out of the water. I've never heard these things before. So being that said, I have a problem with what I'm hearing and what I've encountered, and I'm kind of, you know, like disboggled about it. But there is a problem in Shreveport, and it's racism. And if we don't address that, then we have a problem. I, you know, I do adjudicated properties. In this city, I try to help everyone, not based on if you're white, you're black, whatever race you are. But I have encountered racism here, and I have reported it, and nothing was done. I was told that I didn't have enough money to purchase a nine thousand dollar property because you people, uh, don't have enough money. So this was said in an open atmosphere. And yes, I took protocol and told the correct people. Nothing was addressed, nothing was done. If it's, if it's happening in moderate settings, can you imagine what is happening in a police setting? Everyone here today has went through something or been through something, but if we have racism and discrimination within a, 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 it's supposed to be a, a brotherhood, then we got a big problem. We're gonna have to address that, not put it under the rug as we do everything else. We can't be balked, we can't be befriended because somebody's in a high position, you just can't do those things, you have to do the right thing, no matter who it is. I don't care if you're white or black. If it's something that Mr. Raymond has done wrong, it will be held accountable in front of everybody. If he has not done anything wrong, the same situation. I don't care if you're white or black. If he did something wrong and he's out of line, okay, it needs to be, he needs to be reprimanded. If he has not, if you're trying to convict someone on someone else's behalf, because I know a lot of people here are pissed off at Prater from the things that he's said in the past, and if he's his friend, so be it. Just because I'm friends with somebody does not mean that we on the same agenda. But then again, you could be. But this to be decided at that point of time, you know? But you cannot put racism in a department that you're trying to grow peace.
The motion on the floor is to add Chief Raymond's nomination to the agenda. If there's no further discussion, sir.
We're, we're looking to see whether or not it's unanimous, it requires seven votes rather than just the people who are in the, in the voting.
How, how long will it take to ascertain that, Mr. Thompson?
It's the Indiana's approval of the members of the president.
Right, very good. The motion on the floor again is to add Chief Raymond's nomination to the agenda. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Shouldn't we have discussion?
Yeah.
Where's the discussion?
At, at your pleasure, Councilwoman Fuller.
Well, that's one more person to vote. We can either vote or discuss.
All right.
Let's add to the discussion, add on the agenda.
Mr. Clerk, would you explain the unanimous bullshit?
We have order, Mr. Carey.
Motion carries with six and one out of the chamber.
It doesn't carry.
It, it carries.
It's all members present, very good.
The motion, the motion is adopted. Now the motion to suspend the rules to take up the appointment would be in order.
So moved. Second. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman. There's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries six, one out of the chamber.
Now motion to confirm the appointment.
So moved. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Butcher for approval. End of discussion. Councilman Bradford.
What we said didn't count for citizens, it didn't count.
Y'all gotta be quiet, I'm not being ugly, but we got, I can't hear the outbursts like that, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have the highest regards to the Shreveport Police Department. For the last thirty years, I've been active with them on various, various occasions, starting back when gangs and drugs and violence creeped into the Queensborough Neighborhood Association where a group of us organized, started an association, and we worked with the police to help eradicate that element out of our community. I then was accepted into the first citizens' police academy where I got firsthand knowledge of the operations of the Shreveport Police Department. I rode around in police cars to look at some of the activities and behaviors that the police engage in on a daily and nightly basis. I was appalled of what happens in this city, especially at night. Now, on yesterday, I made it clear to the council that I wasn't prepared to address this issue today because I had not talked to the chief. I had a busy morning, and I was hoping and planning to meet with the chief, but I wasn't able to. But after lunch, the mayor reached out to me and said that he was available and the chief was available if I can come down at two o'clock. And I came down, and for one hour, a lot of the concerns and a lot of the questions that was presented here today was also mine, questions and concerns, because I came out of the very community and environment that brought forth this conversation. Now, I talked about with the chief, the good old boy system that we had been so familiar with in the past, the lack of diversity and certain command posts of the Shreveport Police Department. I asked for his vision. I asked what was his priorities. I asked him what the makeup of the police department was. I told him that I think the police department should reflect the demographics of the city. I expressed to him that I think the command staff of the police department should reflect the demographics of the police department. I had a very wholesome conversation. Now, Mr. Chairman, I will put my community record on the table at this point, and I would say to anybody, that I have never, will I, and I would, I have never nor will I ever participate in a conspiracy or a backroom deal. What, what has happened throughout this process in the process may have been not the best process, but the process was a legal process. This body, seven of us, took an oath to uphold the laws and the Constitution of the State of Louisiana and to uphold the charter of the city of Shreveport. The commentary is accepted because that's a part of the rules. We need citizens' input, we want citizens' input, but at the end of the day, the question is, did the city council of Shreveport adhere to the laws in the oath in which they swore Now, the mayor made an appointment. It's the mayor's responsibility to make an appointment. On yesterday, I asked the mayor, was the committee confused? It was committee, an impression that what they decided was binding, and they had the authority to hold the mayor to what they told him, because that's not, that's not the law. And the mayor said, no, he made it clear that it was just a advice, a recommendation, that he never expressed that he had assuas his responsibility. That's the law. Mr. Bowman acted while the mayor was out of town. Mr. Bowman, by the charter of the Shreveport City, had the right to act on behalf of not what the mayor at the time wanted, but on behalf of what he thought was best for the city in the absence of the mayor. He followed the law. I'm a manager, and, and all my people stay out of trouble, and they make some tough decisions when it comes to patient relations and patient care. Regardless of what the outcome come, all I want to know is, did you follow the policy? The decisions that we make sometime are not accepted by all, but did you follow the law? You stay out of trouble when you follow the law. The mayor did his responsibility. Nothing was done illegal or out of order, the community made their expressions. The council had an opportunity to speak with whoever they wanted to speak with in regards to this appointment. I spoke to Ben Raymond. I had intended to ask him some more questions, but I'm gonna refrain from that. I'm gonna refrain from that. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we be prepared to either vote to confirm or not confirm the mayor's appointment, which he legally and rightfully submitted.
Thank you, Councilman, I mean, Councilman Bradford, Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. First, I have a question for the city attorney. How, what is our role in this, and how much of this vote is actually a formality based on the state policy as well as our charter?
It's a formality in the sense that it has to be, the mayor's confirmation, excuse me, the mayor's appointment has to be confirmed by the charter, by the city council, so it's, it's a large part of the process.
But, but, but based on the civil service, someone mentioned something earlier, I want to make sure that I understand exactly how much of the state level...
Yes, according to the civil service law, the appointing authority, who in this case is the mayor, is the one who makes the recommendation. It is pursuant to our rules and regulations, ordinances, or the charter, that whomever the mayor suggests or appoints be confirmed, just like many of the other directors or department heads of the city.
Right. I made a public statement last week that I believe that the mayor is taking this, taking this seriously, and that he's making what he believes to be a well-informed decision, and that it is our, it's our role to show confidence in that, in that I was going to support him in his decision. But I also want to bring it to the attention of everyone that's here, that in the midst of doing that, I heard a lot of comments about how we came to this appointment. And the first thing is that there was a committee, and we've now been told that that committee was never expected to have a, to be bound to their suggestion. And so that, so it was just a formality that, whoever they came up with? And the thing is, for there to have been more than the formality, there would have needed to have been some sort of objective mechanism from that committee. So if they wanted that to be seen as something that we were bound through their authority, then we should have also received a rubric, criteria, scorecards, a ballot, all of that on the public record. We don't have any of that because that work product does not exist. So that means that once it goes back to the mayor, it's basically back in his purview to pick his selection without necessarily any input from us except for whatever he deems necessary. And so to that end, today, I am prepared, as much as I can be, to go ahead and support who he has chosen based on the information we have in front of us. If he's confident, this is who we've got, but this is a twelve-month probationary period. He can always pull it anytime this twelve months, but then we go back to this other six names that are on the active civil service list. So I say that we all watch and we hold him accountable. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would say that this is possibly the hardest vote I ever dreamed about taking. And I don't understand the process here because normally, when the mayor appoints a department head that has to be approved by us, we go through a public vetting process, but I don't know if we, in our rights to ask the chief to come up or not, or if, if, if this is, if we can and we can't. Because normally, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say the Bible is true, all things work together for the good. After this vote, whichever way it go, should change the tides for you because this is the first time that the council has basically come together to say, whoever you pick, whatever the people say, then we're going to accept it. My pledge has been, and my consistency has been, from the first time I was under council up to this point, is obeying what the charters say. The charters say you have the right to pick, of course, this particular council has. In other days, we've vetted people publicly, and of course, Chief, I have a good relationship with you, so I've never had the opportunity to vet anybody because I just accept who you decided. So Chief, would you come up? Thank you, Chief. I can't imagine how you feel, but I would ask you this...
Y'all gotta have to be quiet, I can't, I'm not gonna ask you no more. I mean, really, we gotta stop.
I would ask you this, with all that you've heard and all of this going on, if on today being confirmed, how would you... would you and who would you bring to the table to basically bring, number one, your department together and bring this community together?
So, a couple of things. And I've heard several disturbing things today, and there's a lot of things I'd like to say, but I feel it's probably appropriate not to. I would say that I'm aware of the, some of the divisiveness. I think today was an indication of that. We have a, there is a perception of police brutality in the African-American community. There's also obviously some perceptions of my leadership within the police department, and I want to address both of those. I think that those people that know me will tell you I'm of the highest integrity, moral and ethical standards, bar none. I would open my record up like a closet and allow you to look through it. There is nothing in my history, personal or professional, that would lead you to believe anything else. There's been a number of falsehoods and slanderous things said today that I hope to be able to address at some point in the future, but I do not believe this is the occasion. In order to, and I go back to what Councilman Bradford alluded to, the command staff needs to represent the department and the city. There are only two positions that I have the ability to appoint personnel. That is, the deputy chief of the police and the chief administrative assistant. The rest of the command staff, what I consider command staff, the assistant chiefs of police and my captains, those are appointed based on civil service rules, which is based on seniority and minimum scoring on a test. So if I'm next in line and I pass the test, I get the promotion. I have no, I have no ability to say it should be this person or that person. I do on two selections. I've already announced that my provisional chief administrative assistant will be Marcus Mitchell. Marcus Mitchell is an African-American officer. He's millennial. He's younger than I am. He carries with him a different background, a different perception, a different way of viewing things. He'll be part of my close command staff, which means I'll be able to reach out for his opinion. He is well-respected in the community. He already is involved in a number of organizations and events outside of the police department, so I think he's going to help round out some of the command staff. There are 14 very capable and highly competent people that passed the deputy chief's test. Going to look very strongly at those candidates and again, appoint somebody that is different from me. I don't need another Ben Raymond in my command staff. I carry with myself my own personalities and background. I need someone such as Marcus Mitchell that is different, that brings something else to the table, that's going to help to unify more of the department and show that I am committed to uniting that divide.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Mayor, again, I'd like to say to you that this sets a precedent for you today.
I'm sorry, Councilman Nicholson.
Excuse me, Councilman, I just wanted the chief not to request. Please continue.
Oh, okay. Yes. This will set a new day for you. You've been here now, I think, for seven, eight months or whatever. Basically, every decision you've made has been questioned by this body. Starting today is a new day for you. And I just want you to make note that this day, I believe it's the 24th of September, that this is a new start. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nicholson.
Chief, let me first encounter point to some of the untrue and incredibly slanderous things that have been said about you in this meeting this afternoon. Thank you, on my own behalf, on behalf of the thousands of citizens of Shreveport that I represent, for your long and honorable service to this community. I've learned over the past 10 months that listening to people say things that are untrue and unfair goes with public service, but it is particularly difficult for me to listen to a man be accused of everything up to and including murder because he is generous enough and strong enough to offer himself in a leadership position for this city. So thank you for your service, and I apologize that you had to listen to that.
Thank you, Councilman.
And second, I just want to offer a brief reply to what I understand your record to be, which includes being a summa cum laude college graduate. You earned a 4.0 in your undergraduate studies, something that I couldn't manage myself. You have served this city for many years as a member of the police department. And you just, in my view, Chief, you are the best possible candidate for the position, and I am deeply thankful that Mayor Perkins has exercised his authority to select you to serve as chief of police. So for all that, I thank you most sincerely.
Yes, sir. Councilman Butcher.
Chief, I will echo what Councilman Nicholson said about some of the things that have been said today. I myself, a little bit of history, I was a firefighter for 20 some odd years. I served the public. I didn't care what color your skin was, if you were laying there bleeding. I stopped the bleeding and I resuscitated you. My wife is a police officer, and some of the things that have been said today without proof do, are hard to hear. The reason that I made a motion to suspend these rules and move forward, and I agree with Councilman Green, that this is the first time we've come together as a council on something, but I feel wholeheartedly that this decision made by the mayor, I think that the process may have been a little bit different than what I had, would have done if I were the mayor, but I wasn't elected mayor. This man's the mayor, and I know civil service, served for 20 some odd years as a civil servant. I know it. I've been, I've sat in the state examiner's office in Baton Rouge. I know it. And Mayor Perkins is the appointing authority for the City of Shreveport. He is the one that makes the recommendations. I wouldn't say this is a formality because it's not, because our charter calls for it, like Ms. Grill just said. However, I do believe that the mayor has done his due diligence when it comes to selecting you, and he did not have to appoint a committee to pick the police chief. It is well within his rights as the elected, I mean, I don't know how many people in this audience voted for Mayor Perkins, but when you voted for him, you gave him that right to select the police chief. He is the appointing authority for the civil service in Shreveport. It is hard for me, as a former civil servant, to go against the appointing authority. I was the appointing authority for Caddo Fire District Five. I hired 10 or 15 people. I would go to my board as a courtesy to tell them, hey, I hired this person. Never once did they tell me, you can't hire this person. So for it to be said, said that there are backdoor dealings, and I'll tell you right now, I disagree with 60% of what the mayor does. I do. It's a fact. He'll tell you that, I think, any of y'all that sit in here will say that.
65.
Yeah, 65. Thank you. But, but I do believe in this instance...
About 95.
No. But I would say in this instance that the mayor has the right. He was trying to be transparent. I believe that the process became flawed at some point. However, I think that Chief Raymond should have always been considered for this position because he has been serving in it for the last 12 months. And, you know, I support, I support Chief Raymond. And one thing that Councilwoman Fuller said that is 100% true, and I want everybody to understand this, and I will be up with y'all, he has a 12-month working test period. At that, at any point during that time, if the mayor so sees that this man is not improving, that the department is not improving, he can remove him without cause, period. That's civil service law. So let's give him a chance. Let's give him a chance to try to turn things around and try to support the man that most everybody in this room probably voted for. He got, what, maybe 60 some odd percent of the vote? Let's support him and see how this goes. I mean, I'm asked over and over again, why don't you support the mayor on this? You should support him. He's, he won the majority. Well, I disagree at times. And I'm not saying I disagree with, with, you know, I do kind of disagree with the process, but I think that ultimately, it's his decision. He's the mayor. He's the appointing authority, and that's why I'm moved to suspend the rules. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Butcher. Council, Mayor Perkins.
I'll let Councilman Green speak. I'll speak last, if that's okay with you, Councilman.
Oh, I just want to tell you, make sure you get a copy of this transcript today.
Oh, friend saying 65%?
No.
The whole transcript.
Please, please dig it up.
I appreciate, we have some former leaders in this room of the City of Shreveport. We've got some leaders on the council from the City of Shreveport. I'm 33 years old. We're talking about divisive and racism today in Shreveport, but let me tell you about the Shreveport that I grew up in and sadly about the Shreveport that I've come back to. I grew up in Cedar Grove, predominantly black neighborhood. As a matter of fact, all black. I don't remember having a white neighbor in Cedar Grove. I went to school in Broadmoor. I went to Arthur Circle, Yuri Drive and Captain Shreve, predominantly black, predominantly white schools in predominantly white neighborhoods. I left after 9/11 to go and protect the country. Fortunately, I was exposed to black and white people, and I knew that I loved America and I loved all people. But again, I want to highlight the environment in which I grew up in. This is something that I have inherited. This is something my generation has inherited, and it's a huge problem for us. I went off, I served the country, I protected black people, I protected white people, I protected brown people, you name it. I protected Americans, and that was my community. While I was protecting the country, things started to rise because of social media and some of our historical wrongs started to come to the forefront. We had the Mike Brown shooting in Ferguson, Missouri, and guess what? In uniform, I took the uniform off and I went to Ferguson, Missouri. Got pictures, got all the records to prove it. After I left the military, I was working for the governor on criminal justice reform, again, fighting for justice, fighting for equity in our country. I was there when Alton Sterling was shot in Baton Rouge. I was there. So, I hear our community, I grew up in this community, I'm talking about every component of this community. And when I decided to come back and run for mayor, I am, I guess I'm naive, because what I wanted to do was try to bring this community together. In the press conference yesterday, I told all of Shreveport, yes, there's been naysayers, there's been people that are going to continue to try to have our children get raised in a divided community like the one that I grew up in, but I'm going to push back against it. This is the moment for us to actually come together as a community, to stand behind the police chief and move forward so your kids don't have to deal with what I dealt with, so they don't have to deal with what you dealt with. But instead, all you hear, black this, white that, woman this, man, like, we have to stop. We have to stop this if we're going to move forward. So I'm asking you today, I hear you loud and clear, I've met with the black officers, you know I've put hours and hour, this is the hardest decision I've ever made in my life, and I've served in combat. There has been, I've put, I've had 30 lives, 200 lives in the balance of the decisions I've made in my life, and this was the hardest decision I've made in my life. The community that I love have put me in this position, but you know what? I knew that I would have to carry this burden when I signed up for this position, and I'm going to carry it forward. I am 100% standing behind Chief Raymond, and I am going to hold them accountable, just like each and every one of you are going to hold me accountable. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Chief Raymond, was there anything else you needed to say?
The one last comment that I would like to address, because I heard it from several different speakers, and I don't want to make myself clear on it. I spoke about integrity and doing the right thing and legality and morals and ethics. Those are principles I was raised on, those are principles I raised my children on, and that's part of my belief system. I will not withstand, I will not promote, I will not tolerate police brutality. That's the reason we have so many officers on leave right now, which is one of the rumors floating around, is that you must be having a lot of problems, you've got a lot of officers on leave. No, we're not having any more problems than we've ever had. Officers are being held accountable. I hold people accountable for their actions, and I want you to hold me accountable for my actions. If you don't think I've done a good job in a year, I will leave. Thank you.
All right.
I think that, thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a question.
We will. I think that the roughest part of the day, what I have to sit here and thought about was, I got a three-year-old at home that I'm, his best friend is Charlie, and that's all he knows, is Charlie. Charlie's my brother, that's my best friend. But Charlie's white, and I hate to see the day come to when one of us will have to make that conversation, or have that conversation with him and let him know that there is a difference, and it shouldn't be, but it is. And I have to go home one day and have that conversation with him. That's the, I think that's the roughest part of what I've seen and thought about today as I've sat here. I've heard people, you know, discuss whatever. I heard somebody flip my mom over in the grave, and heard some, I mean, I've heard some stuff, some disturbing things today, but I think that's the biggest part that I have to, that I've heard and have to deal with today. I'll support the mayor's decision for Chief Raymond. Adding Chief Raymond to the recommendation list is, was what I did, and it was exactly what it was, was a recommendation. And I've talked to several of you out there about that already. It was a recommend, it's a recommendation list. He could have deviated from the list of the three at any time that he felt so, okay? There was an outcry. I did what I thought was best at that particular time while I was in that particular seat. That's what happened, that's the end of it. Wasn't a conspiracy, wasn't a backdoor deal, nothing, none of that. I don't act like that. I don't, I don't do that. And I think most of you know me, and you know I'm not, I'm not about that. I'm not that person, ma'am. I'm not that person. I, it's some stuff I don't believe and can't believe how you're acting today too. So we're on the same page. I understand that. Okay? But I'll support it, Mayor Perkins. And again, it's a year. Hopefully, it's a great job that he does and we can continue to move forward. But if not, then we're, I think all of us up here will have an outcry like everyone else did from the outside in. I call for the vote. Motion carries with seven. The motion was made by Councilman Nicholson, and it was seconded by Councilman Butcher. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Bradford. Can we take a five-minute recess? I agree.
I gotta watch Empire.
We'll be back in five minutes.
We'll take a five-minute recess, please.
He's going to be out of here by sale?
So you can watch Empire?
Five-minute recess.
Chairman, if you're going to charge him, you're ready. We'll come back into session. Mr. Thompson, will you proceed to consent items?
On the consent agenda, we have one item, Resolution 118, concerns a connection to the city's water and sewer system for 10,623 Norris Ferry Road.
So moved. But I have discussion. Ms. Jones, as far as these people tied on the city water and sewer, I think I know about where this house is. What is the administration's thought, since this is really truly an island? I mean, it's surrounded by city neighborhood. Are we getting these annexation petitions? Is the administration got any idea of what we're going to do with those areas that are, you know, we're giving these services to?
Do we have someone from engineering who is, let me get someone from engineering to, to address your specific questions, because I know there is a process that are...
Yes, but St. Patrick's stuff.
Patrick, will you come down real quick? We're looking at, this is on the agenda, Resolution Number 118, for Case Somerville at 10,623 Norris Ferry Road.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Patrick, my question was, this is totally surrounded by city. I mean, the road is, the north side, the south side, it's right, I'm assuming it's right in that little island between the new school and Norris, whatever that is, Hardest Crossing, right?
Yes, sir. This home's actually on the, on the east side of Norris Ferry. So on the other side from...
The way the map showed it looked like it was pointed to that, so I didn't, so it's on the, okay, yeah, it is.
It's on the other side.
With that being a hot number. What is the, I mean, with us tying on, you know, tying these people on to city water, I mean, they've got a city street running in front of their house, they're getting city water. You know, I know that there was some controversy about the annexations of some areas that are out, but this is like one, and we're going to be letting them tie on the city water. What is the, what is the administration's plan as far as going forward? I don't mind doing it, but, you know, if they're going to be getting a city road and city water, they probably need to be in city. What's y'all's take? I mean, are y'all going to take this, or is this going to be one of the ones that's sitting out there?
This is, that's probably part of the larger conversation because there's, I don't know how many of these, but throughout the years, we've granted, or the city council has granted the rights to people outside the city to connect. And in that part, in part of that application, they have to submit a petition for annexation. So the city does have the right to annex them. However... However, not all of them are available for annexation, just depending on their location, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the city's going to put that annexation forward.
I was privy to an email that Councilman Nicholson sent to Ms. Featherston about how many people we had on city water that was outside the city. Have we gotten that back yet?
Councilman, I've not received a response. I believe the question, Ms. Jones, that I asked from Ms. Featherston was how many people were paying, or businesses were paying double rate, which I understand is a proxy for being outside the city a little bit, and she did indicate that she could give us that information, but we'll follow up with her and see if she can provide it.
And I'm not being pro-annexation, or pro-dean, I mean, or pro-leaving it outside the city. I want to know what the actual cost of the city is for these houses that front a city-owned roadway, and that are on city water and have city sewer running in their front yard. Is it better for us to charge them to double the rate? Because there's a, there's a school of thought that it's better to charge them double the rate as opposed to having annex them and getting the city taxes off of it, but I think that's a discussion, and I wish the mayor was in here, that I think we need to have.
Sure, yeah, I understand what you mean, there's a balance, and, you know, that's an analysis that we can, you know, do to make sure that you all have that information.
Yeah, I'd like to from now on, but I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve this. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six and one out of the chamber. Mr. Thompson, please proceed.
We're now under resolutions on second reading and final passage. The first is Resolution 117 acknowledges that the city council has reviewed the 2019 internal municipal water pollution prevention report concerning North Regional and Lucas.
Second?
Been moved by Councilman Flurry, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Please vote.
Motion carries with six and one out of the chamber.
Resolutions 119 and 123 have been adopted. We're now into introduction of resolutions. 121 authorizes the mayor to accept a donation in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from AEP SWEPCO to be utilized by Sportran for the purpose of purchase of an overhead fast-changing station for electric bus, for the electric bus fleet. Resolution 121 authorizes the mayor to accept and assistance to firefighters' grant in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security. Resolution 122 authorizes acceptance of five hundred thousand dollars from the National Park Service for the African-American Civil Rights Preservation Grant through the United States Department of the Interior to authorize the mayor to execute all documents associated with the grant.
Move for adoption.
Second. We're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October the eighth. 121 amends the 2019 Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 128 amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 129 amends the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 130 amends various articles and sections in the Unified Development Code. Ordinance 131 amends the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the city. Ordinance 132 would rezone property located on the north side of West Burt Coons Industrial Loop, approximately one hundred and fifty feet east of Southwood Drive, from C4 Heavy Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District with small planned unit development. Ordinance 133 would rezone property located between Genin Street and Woodrow Street, approximately three hundred and ten feet west of Semford Avenue, from R2 Multi-Family Residential District to IC Industrial Campus District. Ordinance 134 rezones property located west of Lake Shore Drive, approximately three hundred and eighty feet south of Dill Lake Drive, from NA Natural Areas District to R17 Single Family Residential District.
Move for introduction.
Second. We're now under ordinances on second reading and final passage. The first is ordinance 92A, amends section 1.15 of chapter one, general provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to misdemeanor offenses. This is an ordinance that was previously adopted, but we did not amend it, and the amendment is included in this one.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Nicholson, Nicholson's signed, seconded by Councilman Butcher. I'm sorry. Is it? Okay. No, I was asking about this. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
We're now into ordinance is 115, authorizes the mayor to exchange surplus city-owned immovable property and all improvements located at 3406 Velva Avenue, commonly referred to as the former fire station.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Bradford, and seconded by Councilman Butcher.
No discussion, please vote.
Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Was that okay with you, Ms. Flurry?
That was good.
Ordinance 119 amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget.
So moved.
Second. This concerns the airport.
Yes, second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 120 amends the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by the chair, and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 121 amends the 2019 budget for the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Bradford, and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Yeah, Bradford, is that cyber security stuff?
You know it. Ordinance 122 amends the 2019...
Who am I missing? Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 122 amends the 2019 General Fund budget, cybersecurity improvements.
Been moved by Councilman Green, and seconded by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Amendment 123 needs to be postponed.
So moved.
Ordinance 123.
I'm sorry?
Ordinance 123 needs to be postponed.
So moved. And I second it.
All right. Carried by seven, I'm sorry.
Ordinance 124 amends chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to building and building regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Green, and seconded by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 125 amends chapter 102, Article 3A, Section 102-88 of the Code, relative to transportation network companies.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Vice Chair Nicholson, and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 126 amends chapter 74, Article 3, Section 74-56 of the Code.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Green, and seconded by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda, there's no item on the table agenda. We're now under appeals. There is one appeal to be taken up today. It is MPC case number 10-301-WFC, appealed by Alvin C. Meister, third from the decision of the MPC to approve the application for the proposed wireless telecommunications facility at 8100 Jump Run Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Do we need a motion? No, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
No, no, I was, procedurally, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to see, I know there was some guests who signed up to speak on this, but before we ask the participants of the appeal to come forward, I would like to call Mr. Clark, so we can hear the commentary, and then, then Mr. Clark, and then we can, the reading upon time we allowed yesterday would be, would take forward.
Oh, good. Mr. Clark?
Can we hear the commentary first, from the, those that was, that signed up to speak, not the principals?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Councilman Bradford, we received two requests to speak forms. One was from Mr. Alvin Nester, is the lawyer for...
Okay, he's on, he's a participant.
That's right, and then another from Attorney William Bed Francis of San Antonio, Texas, if he is a representative of one of the parties, is that correct, sir?
He's a representative.
Okay, very good, well then we'll, we'll hear from Mr. Clark first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Sir, we're going to, we're going to hear from Mr. Clark.
Okay, I apologize.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Adam Bailey from my staff to come up with me, he works very closely with the wireless communication industry, and he can further answer questions that you may have.
And simply, I think the council's familiar with this somewhat, but the staff recommended one thing, and then the board felt differently. I just want to see if you can give us some clarity on why, why the, why the difference and why the board felt compelled to move, to do what they did.
And I think Councilman Bradford, that it's very reflective of government working, because that's why we have a MPC board, just like that board, the MPC staff makes recommendations to the board, like that board makes recommendations, in some instances, to the city council. We think that part of the confusion with the board, maybe not confusion, but the information that we had provided the board prior to the hearing, and at the time of the hearing, was the reasons that the MPC staff had recommended denial, because we felt that establishing a new tower was not necessary, the data and information did not substantiate that a new tower was necessary, and that the present tower could facilitate the needs for Verizon Hemphill at that location. At the time of the hearing, we got information from technical people that we had not heard before, that were talking about capacity, talking about the need for the future, talking about how the present apparatus would possibly restrict the ability of the city with capacity and with technology to progress and meet the demands of the present market. When the board heard those, that information, the board, and some of the comments, if you read the minutes or listen to the hearing, they did not want to error in holding back the ability of the telecommunications industry in advancing the type of technology that the city of Shreveport needed in order to continue to advance into the future. We feel that, and I've shared this with the, with Mr. Thompson, we felt that possibly there was not enough information from the consultant that we had been dealing with from CMS to address some of those, some of that information that the other side was providing to the MPC board, and that they made a decision strictly based on information from one side and not information that could have been, you know, listened to and digested and would have allowed them to make a proper decision. We have concluded that possibly, that in order for them to have made a great decision, that a independent consultant should have been at that hearing, and an independent consultant could have dispersed, disputed any things that were not true. We basically listened to one side and one set of technical people in making that decision, and we feel that they may not have been the proper decision to have been made, but they did not want to error and be accused of trying to stall technology, and the city of Shreveport has moved into technology. And Adam has been talking to that consultant that we were talking about, and he could possibly give you a little information about what he's been saying.
Yes, basically, the MPC staff report summarized that there was a set of criteria that the applicant needed to meet in order for the application to deem itself, not necessarily complete, because it was deemed complete, but to justify why this wireless facility needed to be at that location. The consultant said that they didn't provide that information, the applicant said they did, and there was a back and forth, a back and forth, and it was like a doo loop. And so then, when we got to the MPC meeting, the consultant wasn't here, the applicant was here, and so therefore, like Mr. Clark said, the applicant was able to say, hey, we ask for certain information, or we provided certain information, and we weren't giving anything in return. And so it was just kind of left at a standstill, and therefore, the MPC board made a decision based on that evidence.
I understand. So, I'm eager to hear from the principals, and if you guys stick around, because I may want to ask one more question.
But gentlemen, let me, before you step down and we hear from the principals, and Mr. Clark, one of the things I've noticed in reviewing the file was that one of the consultants declined to provide information you requested because it was supposedly proprietary to Verizon. Was that part of the issue here?
And if you recall from the records, that was one of my concerns and problems with that consultant, that if everything is proprietary, how are we going to ever get answers to questions that we have in order to make a decision? And I think that was part of the problem, Councilman Nicholson, that they did not have all of the information that they needed, and at no time do I believe they got all the information that they needed. And possibly, we might need to get that information before that board to allow them to make a decision that you might could agree with.
I mean, how can, it just seems to me that if staff was not provided information because it was proprietary, you may not have had the information necessary to conclude that the applicant's burden had been satisfied. Sounds like that was one of your concerns.
And we felt that it had not been satisfied, but the board saw differently.
And so one burden that the applicant had was to establish the necessity of a new tower, and that's really the principal burden.
Yes, sir.
Although there are others. Were there other requirements that staff felt had not been satisfied by the applicant? Or was that the only one?
That was, that was a basic one, that they did not substantiate and present information to show that another tower was needed.
You know, I mean, it also, it concerns me a bit that information that was not provided to staff beforehand was provided at the MPC meeting, that's not really an efficient or practicable way of evaluating technical information. The members of the MPC are probably not, don't have the technical backgrounds to do that on the fly, and I don't know that anybody could.
I agree.
And so, this is not, doesn't concern this appeal only, but I think we ought to, as a group, talk about modifications to the MPC's rules that require all information that is to be considered to be submitted within a reasonable, I see your colleague...
Yes.
...edging in, what, were you going to say something, sorry?
So the Codex amendments that are, will be introduced today, and will be up for adoption in two weeks, at October eighth, will better address that process for at least wireless telecommunications.
Okay, I'd like to, I think we, the council will be able to have confidence in the process if we know that staff had all the information and sufficient time to advise the MPC, and it's not clear to me that that happened in this case through no fault of staff.
And if I may, Councilman Nicholson, I shared that with the MPC board, that we needed to do some amendments to the ordinance, because we were not able to provide them with all the information they needed, and there were restrictions that caused us not to be, but the amendments that we're proposing, that you will be dealing with at your next meeting, give us... give us an opportunity to require all this information being done in a timely manner and it be available for them to make better decisions.
And I, I will say, based on my review of the record, that my, my first inclination, if it were an option, would be to remand this to the MPC and.
And that is an option.
Is, is that an option, Ms. Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Crell?
To have them.
To remand it, I mean, I've asked that question and been told that we cannot remand it.
No, sir, your only options under the articles are to either confirm or affirm their decision, deny the decision, or modify the decision, but you cannot remand it back to the MPC, no, sir.
I guess I'd like to have that option in future cases of this nature. So, maybe we could change that as well.
I think we would like to just look at that because we would like for you to have that option because the citizens of the city of Shreveport would be best served if this would come back to the MPC and they would have the consultant available to them, that's an independent consultant that would be able to advise them properly.
I haven't, I haven't made any conclusion about how I'll vote on this appeal, but if, if we were to reverse the MPC's decision to grant the licenses or the permit for the new tower, could they reapply? Would that in effect be a remand?
Well, under special, you can reapply for special use permit.
At any time?
Yes.
So, they're not barred from making the same application?
Correct.
If that happens, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a few people up on the board, I'm sorry. So, Councilman Bradford, is that old?
No, that's old.
Okay, Councilman, that doesn't, Councilman Butcher, Mr. Councilman Butcher, I'm sorry.
Mr. Clark, thank you. I guess what I'm hearing is that, that realistically, what you're saying in your professional opinion is that the outcome of the MPC approval of the board could have been different if you'd had, or if they had been presented with information different, is that, is that what you're saying?
Thanks, I'm gonna say that if an expert, an independent expert had been there to provide responses to the board, to the questions that they had, there is a possibility that the decision would have been different.
I think that I'm with Councilman Nicholson, I would, I would like to see some legislation where if, if the information wasn't obtained in a timely manner or you as the executive director feel that there was something that was left out or was not presented, I would like for this, this body to have the option to be able to remand it back to y'all, because it's almost like we're, we're having an appeal, but our professionals are telling us that they didn't have the data, so I would like, I know we can't do anything about that now, but I would like to see a change made to where we can send it back to the MPC if you feel like there's some data that's missing.
Yes, we'd be more than happy to share that with the board.
In the future, until that happens, is there any way that y'all can delay that vote until you get the data that you need?
They had the option to defer and continue, but they chose to make a decision at that meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councilman Green, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, hold on a second.
Sorry, Councilman Green, I'm.
And you have Councilman Bradford afterwards, so stay still.
I think you still talked about them foods. Mr. Clark, the tower, from my understanding, there's a tower already, right?
Yes, sir.
And the tower that's there already, the folk that own that tower say that they could convert that particular tower into the need of the folk who want this new tower, am I understanding that right?
That is totally correct.
Okay, so, if they can convert that into what is needed, excuse me, and since we have a whole lot of towers already in the city, why would this body say, let's build another tower, when the tower we have can be used for the same purpose?
And that was the basis for the staff recommendation to deny this application because we were not convinced that this tower could not be, accommodate the needs of this applicant, where it was located, without building a new tower. So, I agree wholly, totally with you, but the board determined, and I have to support the board, determined that they did not agree with our recommendation.
So, if today, if we vote, then what would our vote be, if we voted today, if we postponed to get more understanding of it, but if we voted today, what would our vote be if we would say the tower that's there is suitable for what they're requesting, would we vote yea or nay?
You would be overturning the MPC's decision because they voted to recommend approval of a new tower.
Okay.
But I don't think that that's the worst idea, we could figure out a way to do it so that you could have independent information before you, even if we don't go back to the MPC board, you could have independent information that you could listen to and make a, a decision from a consultant that's hired by the city and not, you know, consultants or experts from either one of these, these are persons that are applying for towers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna be clear now, while as I, I certainly agree with the previous council in regards to having a rule where at least, you know, we'd be able to remand in cases such as this, but nevertheless, in, in cases such as this, whether or not the board approved or disapproved one of the other parties, the appeal is gonna continue to be before us.
Yes, sir.
So, so whatever we deal with, regardless, we need to hear from the partners and the participants of this, of this matter.
You need to hear from consultants.
And then, and then I think we can glean and ascertain what we need to do to see if, if it's appropriate or inappropriate to have another tower. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna ask that we move and give the, those that we agreed to yesterday to give the 10 minutes, let's hear them and then I think we'll be in a better position to see where we are.
Agreed. All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, will the appellate counsel please speak?
Good evening, I have a short PowerPoint, if they could bring it up, please. Good evening, Councilman, my name is Bev Francis of 112 East Pecan in San Antonio. I am the attorney for SBA Structures and tonight, I'd like to kinda follow our discussion and talk about what we consider are four points of error and how, through our discussion, they support a decision by you all to overturn the decision of the MPC and also, after we hear the presentations, those four points of error support a denial of the application. Now, what are the four points of error? Four points of error, number one is, the tower is not compatible with the adjacent properties. Number two, we'll talk about the MPC board, unfortunately, kinda based upon what you all discussed, failed to recognize it was Hemphill's obligation to prove the need for this tower, kinda following up on the discussion that Mr. Councilman Green and Councilman Bradford. Hemphill also failed to meet its burden to submit all the required information, again, following up on our discussion. And finally, business considerations should never be a, the justification for this second tower. Now, point number one, the proposed Hemphill 180-foot tower is not compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties. This is, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the packages, but this is the overview of the locations of the two towers. The existing SBA tower that's been providing Verizon the infrastructure they needed since 2010 to provide excellent service, and then at the lower bottom, you see the proposed site of the Hemphill Tower, only .2 tenths of a mile away. Now, your zoning ordinance says that the city council must consider the following development standards in, in design specifications, and the key one that staff picked up on is the one that says the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of the adjacent properties. Twice, your staff recommended denial because of those points, the interrelationship between the location of the tower, the second tower, is not mutually compatible with the adjacent properties, it's not aesthetically harmonious, and the monopole would be out of scale with the adjacent properties. Now, also additionally, this new tower will be only 37.5 feet away from the Goodwill Building. Now, recognizing that you've had a long agenda, let's kinda discuss quickly, what is a 180-foot monopole? 180-foot monopole is the equivalent of an 18-story building. Put that in reference, as you came tonight, you passed the bank building out front, that's only a 14-story building. The American Tower is a 15-story building. That is the scale that we're talking about, and this is a photo of an existing 180-foot monopole in your parish, that is the scale. Additionally, the impact on the surrounding properties, this is a picture that we had prepared, it's at ground level, the state that you see is the location of the Hemphill Tower, in the rear, you see how close it is to the existing SBA tower on which Verizon is currently providing excellent coverage. Again, this picture depicts how close and out of context it will be to the existing Goodwill Building and directly in front of the theater and in the middle of extensive green space. Point number two, and this is probably the most difficult one that we picked up on, the MPC board failed to recognize it was Hemphill's burden to prove the need for the tower. Unfortunately, kinda following on the discussion of Mr. Clark, there was so much back and forth, so many somewhat rabbit trails that were going down, the board misstated that the burden to prove need is, is, the burden is to prove no need versus the burden on Hemphill to prove need. In other words, who proves no need? Would it be Mr. Clark? Would it be SBA? Would it be a citizen? That's not the standard. The standard is on Hemphill to prove need. Somehow, through the dialogue, all this new information, they got off track, Commissioner Colvin quoted, gentleman is very bright, but he said, so until somebody can say for definite, we don't need this extra coverage, just like he said on wireless use, streaming, et cetera, we better err on what we need, that's not the standard. In fact, the day before the meeting, the consultant emailed staff to confirm again the burden of proof for the need for this tower falls on the applicant and any supporting material had to come from the applicant. Now, code section, so we won't go in detail with you, but the need and justification is clearly set out in your code. Many times tonight, we heard the need to follow the charter, the need to follow the rules in the UDC, well, your charter and rules are very clear as to the documentation and who is to prove the need. Can we focus on this? I think this is very important, following up on Mr. Clark's conversation. To me, this solidifies that Verizon, through their own expert, confirmed they don't need this tower. It was a discussion between Mr. Clark and Wilbur Vale, who was presented as a representative that presented the RF propagation maps. Mr. Clark said presently, on that tower, that's SBA's tower, right now, today, it meets the requirements of Verizon to remain located on the present tower. Mr. Vale said, "The most unfiltered, honest answer, we have to admire him," he said, "to my understanding." What did he just say? He just said, "Today, the tower, Verizon's needs are being met on the existing tower." Mr. Clark somewhat surprised that, "To meet the desires you have," and to Mr. Vale's credit, he didn't backtrack and say, "Oh, I misspoke," he said, "Uh, no, necessarily, I can't go into that because that's proprietary information to Verizon." But yet, all the information he just testified and presented in open session, maps that he based his decision, we need to have this tower, now he's saying, "Oh, that's proprietary." That's like a judge telling the jury, "Don't, you can't consider what you just heard." Mr. Clark understandably was frustrated, saying, "We keep getting that it's proprietary information, we can't ask any questions or make any decisions." Point number three, Hemphill failed to meet the burden to submit all the required information. I won't go into great detail, but staff was very diligent over the months, they'd been working with Hemphill since probably early March, April, May to gather the information. The co-location issue and providing is a requirement, that's the elephant in the room. Hemphill couldn't provide the co-location information because they're already on the tower, that is the closest tower. So, they had to distract away from that issue. Now, Councilman Green, I think you said the gold standard, because back in, listening to the appeal in February 12th of the rock crushing temporary permit, you pointed out, and it was exactly on point in the gold standard of how this has to be handled, you, you stated that you raised your hand and said you'd followed the law, and then you said the most appropriate thing, they, the rock crushing company, has everything in order. Hemphill did not have everything in order. Up until the day before, the consultant's still pointing out that they needed information and as a result, based on that standard, Hemphill's application should have been denied. Point four, business considerations should not be considered, your consultant pointed out that business considerations between Verizon, Hemphill, and so forth have no place in deciding under the code whether or not they meet the requirements to build this second tower. Now, Ms. Kelly Kitchen of SBA submitted an affidavit in our appeal, not just a letter, and I've hoped that you've had a chance to look at it, but critically, in that affidavit, she points out two things. Verizon has been providing excellent service, as Mr. Vale pointed out, since 2010. Since December of 2015, Verizon has not communicated, four years communicated at all, this is an affidavit with SBA, expressing concerns, needs, and so forth, and for the future. In fact, in August, Ms. Kitchen reached out to the Verizon representative and still, to this day, have not, even though they have weekly meetings and to discuss the thousands of towers they're on, there's been no discussion, and the reason that they have not discussed this is all of this is about, is a 20, November 13, 2017 agreement that was highly publicized by Verizon and a tower company such as Tillman and Hemphill. And that was a decision to go out and engage companies like Hemphill to target communities such as yours, to build towers as close as physically possible to existing towers, not for the purpose of improving coverage, but solely for the business plan of moving and relocating antennas off the existing tower on, to the new tower.
Travis.
One, may I have one more?
Let me, I'm gonna, I think we'll hold Mr. Francis to the time limit, but we're all free to ask questions. I am interested in, in the last point you're making, which is that Verizon is engaged in a nationwide effort to undercut companies with which it has tower leases, that's, that's the nut of it, is that what you're saying?
In, in essence, what it is, is exactly what you said, it is a plan, and actually, it's a press release in November of 2017, to do exactly what we said, and here's a perfect example, and it was in your booklet we gave to you, where a couple walked out of their house, looked across the street, Tillman, one of these companies, was constructing a tower for AT&amp;T directly across the street, they looked into it, there's questions still whether or not they had a permit, and the highlighted portions we showed you, it's the residents expressing exactly what I'm saying, this is a nationwide plan to disregard the community but support their business plan. That's why your consultant said, "Business considerations have no play in zoning matters such as this."
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for the question.
Well, I was, I was gonna ask, because, let, let me withhold my remarks until I hear from the other party.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that. Thank you all. All right, Mr. Arshman.
Yeah, I'm actually, Mr. Weingarten is gonna make the primary presentation, I would like to have Elmo on.
Sure.
Can we get, can I?
Can Mr. Arshman have the Elmo? Could Mr. Arshman have the Elmo?
Is it up, straight up? Tom?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is it placed up?
It will be placed up.
Okay.
It will be placed up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. My name is Ralph Weingarten from Falk and Foster, 678 Front Avenue Northwest, Suite 215, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49504, here on behalf of Hemp Hill. The proposed Hemp Hill site is in one of the busiest commercial areas in Shreveport. The only tower in this area belongs to SBA. It is full as it stands and can't accommodate additional wireless providers, and this is something that the MPC took into account in its planning for the future. We also presented proof from Verizon's expert on the need for the tower and the need for the height proposed. To clarify a little bit about the history, we have worked closely with staff. Initially, we requested, you know, what do you need from an RF proof standpoint, and they gave us an example of a T-Mobile tower with a very simple coverage map, with and without. They said we did not have to provide information on service from SBA, and they said there was no instructions or forms on how to produce this. And this was specifically with email with Manas Vini, and she said she did that in consultation with Adam Bailey. We provided information in July, our full RF information based on that instruction, and we did not hear until the Friday before the August MPC meeting from the consultant's letter that more was required. So we have, with due diligence, provided proofs as requested by staff. The problem with the consultant is, he'd never made a substantive analysis of the information we presented, but said we needed to provide variables, assumptions, items that went into the map. We've repeatedly asked and offered to have conference calls as to what those variables are, what, what do you want us to provide to back up how the maps were created, and in what format do you want those? And, and that's because some of the things that go into those maps are proprietary and confidential, but we never raised that, that was never mentioned until the September four meeting. So that was not a stalling tactic or anything like that's been representative. We've, we've been repeatedly pushing to provide what we understood staff to need. We presented Wilbur Vale at the September four meeting, who was the expert. He's the Verizon Wireless System Designer and EValuator as to what Verizon's needs are. He's in the best position to speak to that as an expert. Some of the items he provided were analysis of, of coverage up to twenty-one megahertz level. The coverage with the SBA tower leaves some residential neighborhood to the west and to the southeast uncovered, and also buildings at LSU Shreveport and a hospital complex have in-vehicle coverage, but not, not in-building coverage. With the Hemp Hill Tower location, there's a difference in location and a twenty-foot difference in height, and that fills in that need in the residential neighborhoods. It also fills in in-building coverage for the LSU Shreveport buildings and the hospital complex buildings. The MPC, I think, evaluated the history of information provision and our attempts to provide what was needed, and felt that with the expert's testimony of the very person that designs the system at Verizon and the maps that we provided, that that was enough for them to make their decision. But in addition, they also, as a planning body, looked towards the future, and structurally, SBA is full with Verizon on it, and they've talked about extending it to twenty feet, but that's only to accommodate Verizon, and they don't have room for additional providers. As a smart city, the need for robust infrastructure for the future to accommodate future providers in this busy area is a valid statement of need as well, in addition to the specific Verizon need. So, as far as compatibility, we also presented, in addition to overall maps, also a comparison of the base areas between the two towers. The SBA location is right by Yori Drive and Berkhun's Industrial Loop, it's right on the property lines against the IHOP restaurant in Copelands in New Orleans looming over those, that busy traffic area. Our location is near the loading dock and dumpster area for Goodwill, there's Walmart HVAC units, it's not in a busy public-traveled area, so in terms of compatibility, our location is actually much more compatible with its surroundings. It's in the center of a busy commercially-zoned area, we're not near the edges where the residential districts are, but in the center. The scale of the parking lot and existing buildings is huge, so in terms of its compatibility, it would not stick out any worse than what the existing tower does at present. And that's, to people driving on the road, that's kind of lost in the poles and lines in the foreground as well. So, from our consideration, a twenty-foot extension isn't possible. SBA has mentioned in the past, Section 6409, a federal law would allow them to extend it by twenty feet without further approval, but there's an exception for health and safety standards. Being so close to the property lines there, tower does not meet the required fallback radius setback, and to increase that would just increase the non-conformity. So, we, we feel that a tower extension can't be approved at the SBA location either. I'll yield the rest of my time to Mr. Conder and Mr. Ursin.
May I ask one question?
Yeah. Do you wanna wait, you wanna ask now?
Yeah.
Okay. Stop the time.
Stop the time.
Okay, Councilman Green.
Who you wanna ask?
The gentleman that was...
I was just trying, one of the, when the, when the, when the, when Elmo is on, we don't know how much time is left, so that's one reason I was pulling on Ralph. If he has four minutes, I'd like to, like him to continue, but I couldn't tell.
No, we will, I get to, Mr. Green, Councilman Green had one question for him, and we'll yield the time, but he had a question for you.
He could continue. Our count was, was different than your count, but I couldn't see your count.
No, he just had a question for him, and then you can come back.
My question, my question is, are you all, my first question is, you were saying billing for the future, are you all billing for the future for your company or for the city?
It's in the community interest, and I think the SPC, the MPC saw that, because we're constructing our tower not just for Verizon, but for a total of four provider spaces. And so, if Verizon leaves SBA Tower and comes to ours, there's still three remaining slots for future providers at our proposed tower location, and that, of course, would open up an additional slot at SBA. So the net result of approving this is to go from a situation where there's zero additional space available, to where there's four additional spaces available for future providers in this area, and those will be needed.
So you're saying that before you all went out to do this, you got input from the community?
Generally, we look at areas where there is a need, and in this case...
No, I'm saying, was the community crying out for this? You said, "Community." Were they crying out that another tower will come to this area?
I, I think that there's not a specific community voice in a commercial area like this. It's an, an analysis that comes from the companies themselves, and Verizon had specific needs and objectives that they couldn't meet on the SBA site that they can meet on the Hemp Hill location. The three-hundred-foot notice that you have is to give the opportunity for the community to cry out if it feels there's some kind of impact or aggrievement on their property, and we did not have anyone come to any of the meetings that had concerns or, or opposition to this location. The only testimony we had was from David Tinkus, the CEO of Goodwill Industries, just testifying that as the property owner, it didn't affect their operations, they were fine with it, and that the revenue actually helps with their community programs.
Okay. My next question is, basically, is this, is this really about a market takeover that once, say if we, you all got this eighteen-story, I think he said it was eighteen stories, would then you all have the opportunity to market to whoever was on this, how tall was the other tower?
Yes, sir.
Ten-story, whatever, then you all could market to the rest of the towers to say, "Look, we got an eighteen-story, they got a ten..."
Sixteen-story.
Yeah, and with the way things are going, you all would be better to come over to us. So is this actually undercover market takeover, or...
I think that's an odd way of describing, I think it's an odd way of describing healthy competition, because it's better, best for the city for this to be an attractive area for future providers to come to and locate, and that, and that their applications be processed in a timely manner, and that the fund, the fees charged be reasonable, and in a lot of cases, when someone has a monopoly, they control that.
Okay, so let me ask you another, since that's all, you all are thinking that way, then has it ever come up that both parties would come together and say, "All the good points that you have, and all the good points, say, y'all build a tower together, and it'll just be one tower?"
Well, and that's, and that's the purpose of your ordinance, saying, "Let's look at the existing tower, and if there's more room, and, and justifying a new tower." And what we're saying is, their tower is full right now, there's no room for an additional person. We're arguing about Verizon relocating as part of this, but the next provider in line has no place to go here. And so there is a true need beyond just a business poaching-type thing that they're trying to portray.
But he said, from my understanding, that they can add to that tower to supply whatever you want.
And, and we disagree with that, because they're proposing a twenty-foot extension to give additional height. It doesn't address the locational change in needs, but it addresses height, but that twenty-foot, we feel increases the non-conformity with your fall zone radius, and that's something that's for the safety of those people at IHOP and Copelands in New Orleans and the public traveling around the base and parking around the base of that tower. And that's something that they say federal law lets them do, but we say, "No, from a safety standpoint, that, that fallback, that setback fall radius stays in force, and that's not something that federal law overrides."
So when you all leased this tower, did y'all think about that then? Were y'all that concerned before the now, or now that you can expand? When you all got on this tower, did you all take...
Oh, yeah, the needs constantly change, so at the time, they were able to sufficiently meet their needs at that location.
So no people were walking around it then, and saying...
Well, there were people walking around it, but Verizon came to the tower to locate on it. They didn't, they didn't build it in that location. I don't know what went on, that that was approved at that location at the time, but we certainly weren't, when they located on it, advocating that it be expanded or increased. And now they're talking about increasing the non-conformity and increasing the safety factor.
But I guess, isn't that how business work, that if you need, you have a customer with the need, then you satisfy the need of the customer?
If you can legally.
So they said...
With concern for safety.
So if they extended, would it be illegal?
Yeah, we feel it would be, it's a non-conforming use.
So is it allowed it to be legal, or is it just going by your feelings?
Pardon?
You said you all thought that it is, that it would be illegal.
Correct.
But is there a law set that they can't go, if you all can build an eighteen...
Yeah, you, you require one-hundred-and-ten percent of the fall zone radius to be away from the property line for a tower base. And so if you're gonna go and increase that, when it already doesn't meet that, that would be taking an existing non-conforming use and expanding the non-conformity, which is not legal.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got, Councilman Nicholson.
I'll yield to Councilman Flair.
Please, I appreciate, I just cannot let this get by. Councilman Green has already said you's a gold nugget, standard. Did you see that while I go? So you might figure that thing out for him.
Councilman Nicholson.
It's not clear to me whether, whether part of the fault for this might not lie with our inadequate rules, but my primary concern is that our staff, the MPC's staff, apparently did not have information sufficient to, to draw some of the conclusions you're presenting as argument today. So for example, there was suggestion in the briefing that a consultant indicated that he could not provide information about whether the existing tower was sufficient because that information was proprietary. Did that happen before the MPC, is that true?
That did not happen. The only mention of proprietary was by Wilbur Vale at the September four meeting that he highlighted. Prior to that, we have provided everything that was requested of us. We reached out to the consultant directly, and they said we should communicate through staff. We've asked staff numerous times, and that was through Manas Vini, and she never provided and said, "Here's the form you need to fill out, or here's the variables the consultant needs, or here's the information." We provided information back in July, and were never told that was inadequate, or that there was a problem, or more was needed, until right before the August meeting, the consultant letter came. The T-Mobile example that was given to us as, "Here, do a map like this," was never reviewed by the consultant, that was part of an administrative approval, and evidently, that's enough information in that case, but not in this case. We submitted on at least three different occasions, resubmitted to try to guess what was needed. And, and still, at the time of the MPC meeting, we had not received clear communication from staff as to what, just tell us, "Fill this form out," or "Give us this information." We had nothing to go back to Verizon with for their legal to look at and say, "Oh, we can't provide that, it's proprietary," or "We can provide that." We just simply did not have the request or the details as to what we needed to provide. And I think at that point, the MPC saw that history, and saw that we came with an expert who designs the system and a full set of maps, and said, "Okay, just like with the recommendation for the police chief situation, yeah, we've got a consultant here, we've got recommendations, but we, this body, will decide, you know, if there's sufficient information in front of us." And I think they believed the expert from Verizon and felt that they could make the decision in good faith without stalling any longer.
Would you comment on opposing counsel's suggestion that at least one member of the MPC misunderstood the burden of proof as it relates to a need for a second tower?
I think, I think there was a lot of commentary made, and you can go back through the video and cherry-pick certain statements out of context, but I think there was a clear concern on evidence of all the MPC members to make a decision that was in the community interest for the future and ensure that there was adequate infrastructure there. And so I think they, they also asked Wilbur specifically about the documentation prevented, presented on RF standpoint, and felt that, I know one of the members remarked afterwards, the fact that you had him here made the difference, that he as the expert could speak to that and back that up. And so I think the decision was informed by both the specific need proven for Verizon, as well as the general need for additional wireless infrastructure in the area.
What about the idea that this is just one permit application that is part of a nationwide effort by Verizon to co-locate towers, near-existing towers, to cut its lease costs? Is that what's going on in part?
We're basically in communication always with Verizon, and I'll let Luke Conder speak to Verizon's definite, direct negotiations with SBA, but I know from talking with him that they're in constant conversation with SBA about all their sites across the board, and always looking to, you know, maximize their ability to implement new technologies quickly. So in this case, we, in working with Verizon, get certain areas highlighted where there's a need, and that need may be a combination of needing a new location and needing a new height, or, or other factors. And in this case, I think we've presented the RF information that this is not just about business, this is about, as I just showed on the maps, one location and the height available is not adequate to provide the service in those areas, and this new location is, in terms of both height and location, adequate to serve those residential neighborhoods as well as the in-building coverage. So the basis of our proof for Verizon's need is not a financial or business consideration, it's the RF proof that we presented.
Verizon, of course, is an important corporate partner for City of Shreveport, and municipalities around the nation, we appreciate the service that Verizon provides to our constituents. I am concerned about the, the prospect of having twice as much visual pollution, twice as many towers in our community, simply because Verizon wants to pay less in rent. I have to believe that's at least part of what's going here, but I haven't drawn a conclusion about the technical arguments, arguments that are being advanced, because, you know, our, our staff has not been able to draw a conclusion, it tells us. Thank you.
Councilman Flair?
I'm gonna keep this brief, because I want y'all to finish, but, but I have a couple things. Keith Hanson, are you gonna stay around till after this is over with? Because I may have some questions for you. I think the biggest thing for me is, and then I'm gonna let y'all finish, because I wanna hear both sides, is it's my district, it's, it's the people in my district that are affected by this, and I can attest by, two years ago, sitting in Highland Hospital, a great deal with my mother, that service there is not great for Verizon. It's just not, on the bottom floor especially, in the cancer treatment center that I spent a lot of time in two years ago. You had data issues and kind of in-and-out service, maybe one to two bars. So I, I think what you're saying, and I think that was the most telling thing for me, is, is if you're standing by that, that it's gonna be better service for the constituents of my district and the people that, that visit these commercial areas, I really don't care about profit. about profit, to be perfectly honest with you. I want to make sure that we have good service, and that's where Mr. Hanson's going to come in after you're done. I want to ask him a few questions. So go ahead, proceed. I just wanted to-
Yep. And, you know, to speak to that too, in terms of compatibility, we're conscious that, especially in residential areas, there's a lot of sensitivity to additional towers. In this case, we feel that the additional four spaces provided by another tower is the only way, the only way to provide it is through another tower because of the limitations in terms of fall zone radius and structural capacity. At the SBA, it cannot host additional future providers. So we feel we're providing a real community need in terms of expanding wireless capacity and that this is the appropriate place to do it, in the middle of that commercial area, tucked back behind the Goodwill there. It's not right out front and center, right up by the main roads or by the restaurants. It's the most appropriate location in that area for a tower, honestly. And I'll yield the rest of my time to others. Thank you.
Chip lines, 201 St. Charles, New Orleans, on outside counsel for Verizon. As was mentioned before, Verizon has, and both Hemp Hill and Verizon have established a need for additional coverage and capacity in this area. And so I've got, and one of the other, one of the other issues with providing that additional coverage and capacity is putting Verizon in a position to get new technology, new equipment to market as soon as possible. So I've got Luke Condor here from Verizon. He's our senior manager for real estate for this area and can better testify to both the coverage and capacity issues as well as the ability to get new equipment to market as quickly as possible.
So I wanted to come up and ask you guys to deny the appeal. And the reason for that is, as Ralph presented, there are some additional coverage areas impacted by this tower. There's some additional space provided between the two towers, which reduces the noise, which allows the network to operate more efficiently. When you get two towers too close together or have nearness, it creates noise. When you get a little more separation from our existing sites, there's a better overlay. So if you think about it like a soccer field, spread the field out, cover it as well as you can. If you look at how Shreveport has grown, it's grown in the last 15 years. As the town grows, as the population grows, as the population adjusts, the network has to take a breath with that every now and again. So as new technology comes in, the ability to rapidly deploy that technology where it can be most effective is a critical need. So that, you know, everything from in-building coverage to just the capacity and number of users that we can support that come on to the system. And I mean, that's pretty much all I had, if you guys have anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we were to, I don't know what's the correct word, Counselor Nicholson, postpone, could Verizon provide us with a little bit better? I'm sorry, I couldn't see the coverage area very well on that overhead. Could y'all provide us with a little bit better map when y'all come back? And I'd like to also see, because I understand what you're talking about. Where's the next closest Verizon tower to where y'all are? Or to where the current one is located next to IHOP? I guess what my-
This is Hemp Hill location, the red project. So this is the proposed location, and these are the existing locations in the area.
What about putting it on the app?
I think the color was- Yeah, it's kind of hard to see, at least for me.
And this was in the MPC presentation as well.
And just to clarify one thing, Wilber Vale's not a consultant. He's the RF engineer that manages this area, East Texas and Northern Louisiana. And so that's why he's the expert that we called upon to present. And these are his maps. And we can-
So you have one somewhere around Sam's, correct? I mean, I'm not trying to throw y'all off, but-
To the north.
Yeah, to the north. It looks like it's around Sam's or Chevy Land. Is that right? Like about the 7,300 block area, probably, somewhere in that range. Yeah, right there, Regal Drive, probably, where you have-
On the north side.
Okay. And then you have one down at 3132 and Burke Coons. So this is a little bit more.
So it's-
Right there's that. There it is. Okay. Here's- While we're doing this, while we're looking at this, Mr. Chairman, can they go ahead and finish? They've got two minutes.
Counselor Bradford, want to speak first?
Mr. Malresvering, until the end, both parties complete with their presentation? You are?
Yeah, we wanted to use our final two minutes, if we could, please.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom Arseno, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. The only thing that's been raised is, is there a need? Here's your best proof of a need. When faced with the mapping that was provided by Hemp Hill, SBA said, oh, we don't meet that need, we can extend our tower. There's your need. The most obvious thing, but SBA wants to maintain a monopoly in this area, so it doesn't want the ability of people in this area to receive better service from a competitor in a competitive situation for their rates and everything else. It's plain and simple. We've now been to three public hearings on this. Not one single person, other than the business competitor, has appeared in opposition to this application. And that should tell you something. Tells you something about compatibility. Verizon, SBA cannot raise that tower. It is a nonconforming tower, which means the main thing it doesn't mean is your fall zone. What is fall zone? That means if the tire, tower falls over, who's it going to hit? That's pretty important to Mr. Butcher's constituents and the people of Shreveport. This tower will obviate that problem. So there clearly is a need. With respect to presenting the information, Mr. Weingarten did double backflips to provide every piece of information anybody would tell him he had to provide. They offered to talk to the consultant to find out what the consultant needed. He refused. Finally, we still believe that the only injury that SBA will suffer is an injury to its pocketbook. That does not, under your UDC, constitute them an aggrieved party. Hemp Hill met its required burden, the MPC recognized it, and we respectfully suggest that you affirm the unanimous decision of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Be glad to answer any questions.
This gentleman wants to say something?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I object. I object, Mr. Chairman. We set the rules yesterday, and their turn is over.
It's not when you make accusations like monopoly to a property entity, and I would respectfully request you to be able to address those.
You may be able to address them in my comments, but let me just say this. Mr. Chairman, am I in order?
Yeah, you are.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, let me first express to these gentlemen who came in to make their argument very compelling arguments, very, very compelling arguments. Let me see what I heard here today. I heard facts on planning for the future versus the law. And, you know, attorneys know that, you know, if you're in court, if you don't have the facts, you argue the law. If you don't have the law, you argue the facts. That's what-
And if you don't have any, you pound the table, counsel. That's the rule about that.
So, then I heard profits versus community interest. And the community interest was, are we polluting the sky around our neighborhoods? And then I heard, and which is, I guess, the thing that we have to be conscious of right now, and because I mentioned this earlier in my commentary regarding the police chief and where do the authority and the rights lie? And if we in any way misprocedurally doing things, then it would, in my opinion, compromise what we decide to do. And I'm wondering, did we not follow the law? And if we didn't follow the law, then everything else needs to hold up until we are clear on the process that has taken place thus far, is in decent in order with what's within the preview of the MPC, ZBA, and the Shreveport City Council. I can accept all the arguments. I really can, because the future is what we always have to shoot for. And we don't plan to fail, but we fail the plan, then we will call 10 years from now in a quagmire that we didn't act. But I do want to repeat that I want to act with prudence and with integrity to the process. So there were several recommendations that maybe we need to postpone. I don't know, but I'm just saying, I need somebody to tell me, was there any errors with the MPC and the way they conducted the various aspects of the MPC Board, the hearings and the decisions that was made? I don't see that any more. So you want to speak? You can.
Yes, sir. I can give you an exact point to that. During the hearing, and you can see the transcript, the same misrepresentation that was made tonight, that my client's tower is a nonconforming tower and cannot be extended, is absolutely incorrect. It is a, under the federal law, you can come in and do it as a 6409, nonsubstantial modification. Means you can extend it to allow exactly this situation. They sit there and they say, what about the fall zone? We won't comply with the fall zone. All that is hypothetical. They don't know what our fall radius is. The fall radiuses are determined, like your staff says, by sealed engineer's letter. Yet they take people down the rabbit trail with these accusations. Oh, it's not going to be able to be extended because it won't reach the fall zone. Their tower's going to be 37 feet away from the Goodwill Building. 37 feet, and they're screaming, our tower is nonconforming, therefore, it cannot be extended. I do this around the country. That is absolutely false. So yes, sir, that was presented to the MPC, and the commissioner was questioning back and forth exactly on that point. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to have this kind of statement to clarify and to call out the misstatement. The second thing that was very interesting is, they come up here and they show you these maps, and they say, Wilber Vale presented these maps. Yet I showed you the testimony where Wilber Vale responded to Mr. Clark. I presented the testimony, and he said there wouldn't be any difference as an honest person. Then he caught himself and said it's proprietary. Well, if it's proprietary, then he couldn't discuss it, then see, the problem is exactly what was pointed out. Information was laid out by them at the hearing that the consultant had no ability to look at, and these off-the-wall statements, oh, well, we got coverage here, we got coverage there, that's what the consultants were for. So yes, sir, it was not followed. They did not provide, they did not provide, show the need. They did not provide the information. They provided it at the meeting. One final thing, and we have attorneys and business people up here, monopoly. Do you realize what that means to call a public company, one of the third largest in the country, a monopoly? There are 74 macro sites in this city, towers. We don't own all of them. We want Verizon to do exactly what you're asking, Commissioner. Go fill the gap. Go find the areas of Shreveport, build towers like SBA does, for carriers to resolve gaps. So to come out, and this is why we have transcripts of these meetings, because statements such as this are made as trigger language to governmental entities that have jurisdiction over my client. So yes, sir, the rules were not followed, and thank you for allowing me to respond.
I'm almost cautious. I'm always cautious to overturn or, the MPC has the staff and they have the resources to vet whatever they do. It appears that some information was not available or shared at the time, and that's concerning. That is concerning. So the responsibility of making sure that all areas and the whole aspects of an issue that's built before the city, through that body, is vetted, and the highest level of research and integrity should be put into that. I'm not clear right now, but I do say again, as the authoritative figure, like we were talking about earlier, responsibilities of different sectors of city government and their responsibility, we want to, as often as we can, to give that body the highest consideration because that's what they get paid to do. So I think here, we have some diverse understandings of what we ought to go from here, but I'm going to quit here and hear from my colleagues and see what their thoughts on this. So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Counselor Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's plain that we're not going to be able to make a decision today, and so I am going to move to postpone this matter. Before I do though, I'd like to exercise my privilege of asking questions and ask Mr. Arston whether he'd like to say anything in response, because we've afforded one-sided rebuttal. So, Mr. Arston, what would you like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. The monopoly issue is real simple. If you deny, if you overturn the MPC, SBA has a monopoly because there's only one tower in this area. It's very simple. I'm sorry, Mr. Francis took exception. I've been through several of these hearings with him. I've taken exception to several things that he said. We ask respectfully that you affirm the decision of the MPC.
Counselor Green.
Thank you. Where are you talking about a tower at? At 6029 Buncombe Road, where my church is, there's a tower there. So I've experienced them coming, extending it, and extending it, and extending it. If you go to 6029 Buncombe Road, when we first got there, it was one length, and now it's possibly four more lengths high. And they come in and they do whatever they do, and somebody else hook on to it, and somebody else hook on to it. It's right there at the church. So I've watched them. I mean, they go up so high that you can't even hardly see them. So what I- So, what I see this as, who's going to take over planning for the future at another's expense? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? I was on the board, but it went away. Mr. Hanson, could you come up for just a second? What's the city's stance on this?
I don't...
No, I mean, I don't know what, as, as the, you know...
Would you further muddy the waters, please?
No, Mr. Francis brought this up. Smart city, you're, you're over that. I would be not doing my job to my constituents to see what you have to say. Is there some validity to what's being said as far as, I know for a fact, like I said about the Highland Hospital deal, I know I can go in Walmart and I get perfect service and I can go to Willis Night Pyramid and I get good service, but if I go into parts of Highland Hospital, I don't. How does that fall in, and I'm not trying to, I just wanna make sure that we're giving you what you need to achieve your goal, because this is part of it, I think. And then where does that fall in with 5G? Because that's a question that I have as far as the tower goes.
If the councilman will yield while, will you yield briefly? Mr. Hanson, my suggestion to you is, if you have the expertise to address this and you're inclined to do so, then by all means do, but if you don't, I think it would be perfectly appropriate for you to say that the city doesn't have a position. But I mean, this is not...
Certainly agree.
Well, well, what my, where I was going...
Certainly agree.
Where I was going is, I would like for, for Mr. Hanson, if we do take this, if we do postpone this, I would like for Mr. Hanson to be able to, to tell us what we need to go forward.
Mr. Hanson's not an expert in this, Councilman.
Not with this town.
He doesn't have a vote and you're muddying the water up.
I'm not saying that he's got a vote, but I'm saying that I would like to hear where he goes as far as where this falls...
You can do it privately, off the side.
Well, and I will, but what I wanna know is where this falls into our smart city plan. And that might be something, that might be something, you're right, to do in a private setting. But I do, if we do postpone this vote, I would like for Mr. Hanson to research this for me because you're, you're the expert.
He would be required to do that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's all I'm saying, I wanna know where we are as a city...
We have to know.
...of our constituents, you know, if this is a good, if we do need any...
That's necessary. We, to act intelligently, we need to hold...
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the council of a couple of points. Number one, the rules allow you guys at least 90 days to make a decision, so you don't have to make a decision today. Also, the rules require that any decisions that's made has to be based on the information that is in the record of council. So, I'm not sure if it would be permissive for Mr. Hanson to provide any additional information or insight other than what has been provided to you...
By council.
By, by the council, by the applicants, by the respondent and from the documents. Also, Ms. Far Ewing was kind enough to craft kind of a, for lack of a better word, a cheat sheet to kinda guide you in your thought process and your discussions. I would advise you to review that. It is work product, I do that for the record, but I would advise you to review that to kinda guide your decisions in making your determination ultimately.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Green?
Mr. Hanson, just for the record, Mr. Thompson has a motto that he used about, what'd you say about the, when who's in the room and your, what'd you say?
He's a wise man, you know?
I don't remember what comment you're talking about.
Mr. Thompson has a motto that says, "When the council is involved in whatever, whatever, he don't speak." So, if I were you, he'll tell you on the side, I can't remember what he said, but I understand. Do you remember that?
When the elephants fight, the grass suffers.
When the elephants fight, the grass suffers. I just wanted to give you that for some food, that's it. Thank you, sir.
And I was not trying to put you on the spot, I just, I really wanna know for my own, is, you know, how does this affect your trying to... Don't answer, don't answer, don't answer.
Thank you.
The councilman flurry is missing, what is it you're missing? Empire.
Empire, and he's got quite a grouch.
Mr. Chair, I move for a postponement of this particular, I second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be postponed for a time certain? The only reason I ask because we have people from out of town and are, are we gonna...
Well, I mean, now that, Mr. Thompson, you asked the question, perhaps more than a two-week delay would be appropriate since we've got 90 days to make a decision. What about...
Last weekend in October, last council meeting in October.
Yeah, very good. That's Mr. Green's motion and I second that motion.
Yes, sir, last week in October, last council meeting in October.
Let's see what date that is, so we'll be, sir.
Please vote.
Identify the date, Mr. Chairman.
It'll be the, the second Tuesday of October.
22nd, October 22nd?
Yes, sir.
Fourth, oh, I'm sorry, fourth, excuse me, Mr. Arston. I'm glad a former member of the council's here.
22nd?
22nd, very good.
Yes, sir, that's my motion.
Was there a second to the motion?
A second.
Yeah.
Just vote it, right?
It's a vote.
Oh, I thought...
Motion carries with six when we're not in the chamber. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for your...
Thank you for the opportunity to present.
I apologize for the length of the meeting.
Mr. Thompson, are there other appeals?
No, sir, not today.
Are there any reports from offices, boards or committees? Is there a clerk's report?
I gave it yesterday, I don't think any of it needs to be repeated.
All right, does any council member have additional communications? Seeing now, the meeting is adjourned.